I'd like to hereby call to order the Escambia County Planning Resoning Meeting for November 1st. And at this time, I'd ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, folks, we do have four voting members, so we do have a quorum for the meeting this morning. I understand there's a few more of them that may be coming, that may be caught in traffic. So, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting this young lady here this morning, so if you would please introduce yourself for us.
Good morning, I'm Kristin Huell, the Deputy County Attorney.
Okay, thank you, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I'm sorry, just a little bit louder, Mr. Sammons has a hearing implement, so just a little bit louder, please.
Certainly, I'm Kristin Huell with the County Attorney's Office.
And she is tough.
Good, maybe you could keep some of these people in line around here, mainly me. All right, folks, I'd ask you to turn off any kind of noise makers, so we don't interrupt the meeting. And staff members, have we had proof of publication?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and does that publication meet all of the legal requirements?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Chair will entertain a motion to waive reading of that legal. Motion, do we have a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You've been previously provided with the meeting minutes from the prior meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those meeting minutes? Hearing none, Chair will entertain a motion to accept as is. Motion second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The rezoning hearing package for November 1st with the findings of facts has previously been provided to all of our board members. The Chair will now entertain a motion to accept that rezoning hearing package with the findings of facts and the legal advertisements into evidence. Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The rezoning hearing package with the findings of facts and the legal advertisement will be marked and included in the record for all three of today's cases. At this time, we're going to ask our court reporter Dave to please swear in the members of the staff that will be testifying.
Do a firm.
Okay, Horace, are you, okay, John, you are testifying as well?
Yes.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Board, you've previously qualified both of these members to be experts in the area of land use and planning. Do any of you have questions about their qualifications or their ability to offer that expert testimony? Hearing none, the Chair will accept both of those gentlemen as experts in the area of land use and planning on behalf of the county. At this hearing, the Planning Board is acting under its authority to hear and make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on rezoning applications. These hearings are quasi-judicial in nature. Quasi-judicial hearings are like evidentiary hearings in a court of law, however, they are less formal. All testimony will be given under oath, and anyone testifying before the Planning Board may be subject to cross-examination. All documents and exhibits that the Planning Board considers will be entered into evidence and made part of the record. Opinion testimony will be limited to experts, and closing arguments will be limited to the evidence in the record. Before making a decision, the Planning Board will consider the relevant testimony, the exhibits entered into evidence, and the applicable laws. Each individual who wishes to address the Planning Board must complete a speaker request form, submit them to the staff members. They're located in the back of the boardroom. You will not be allowed to speak unless we have received a completed form. Please also note that only those individuals who are present and give testimony on the record at this hearing before the Planning Board will be allowed to speak at the subsequent hearings before the BCC. No new evidence can be presented at the BCC meeting, therefore, all testimony and evidence must be presented today. The Planning Board will provide a recommendation for each rezoning request to the BCC. They will then review testimony, documents, and exhibits, consider the closing arguments, and make a final decision. All decisions by the BCC are final. Anyone who wishes to seek judicial review of the decision of the BCC must do so in a court of competent jurisdiction within thirty days of the date that the BCC either approves or rejects the recommended order of the Planning Board. All written or oral communication outside of this hearing with members of the Planning Board regarding any matters under consideration today are considered ex parte communications. Ex parte communications are presumed prejudicial under Florida law and must be disclosed as provided in BCC Resolution 96-13. As each case is heard, the Chair will ask that any board member who has been involved in ex parte communication identify themselves and describe the communication. The rezoning criteria, as required by Section 2-7.2 of the Escambia County Land Development Code, the Planning Board's recommendation to the BCC shall include consideration of the following approval conditions. Approval conditions: The applicant has the burden of presenting competent substantial evidence to the reviewing board establishing that the requested zoning district would contribute to or result in logical and orderly development pattern. The appropriate surrounding area within which the uses and conditions must be considered may vary with those uses and conditions and is not necessarily the same area required for the mailed notifications. A logical and orderly pattern shall require demonstration of the following conditions: A) Consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed zoning is consistent with the future land use category as prescribed in LDC Chapter 3 and with all other applicable goals, objectives, and policies of that comprehensive plan. If the rezoning is required to properly enact a proposed flu map amendment, it must be transmitted to the state agency for review. The proposed zoning is consistent with the proposed flu and is conditional to its adoption. B) Consistent with the zoning district provisions. The proposed zoning is consistent with the purpose and intent and with any other zoning established provisions prescribed by the proposed district in the chapter. C) Compatibility with surroundings. All of the permitted uses of the proposed zoning, not just those anticipated by the rezoning applicant, are compatible as defined in Chapter 6 with the surrounding uses. The uses of any surrounding undeveloped land shall be considered the permitted uses of the applicable district. Compatibility is not considered with potential conditional uses or with any non-conforming or unapproved uses. Also, in establishing the compatibility of a residential use, there is no additional burden to demonstrate the compatibility of specific residents or activities that are currently protected under fair housing laws. Appropriate of spot zoning. Where the proposed zoning would establish or reinforce a condition of spot zoning as defined in Chapter 6, the isolated district would nevertheless be transitional in character between the adjoining districts, or the differences within those districts would be minor or sufficiently limited. The extent of these mitigating characteristics or conditions demonstrates an appropriate site-specific balance of interest between the isolated district and the adjoining lands. Appropriate with changed or changing conditions. If the land uses or development conditions within an area surrounding the property of the rezoning have changed, the changes are to such a degree or character that it is in the public's interest to allow new uses, densities, or intensities in the area of the rezoning, and the permitted uses of the proposed district are appropriate and not premature for the area or likely to contribute to sprawl. At the beginning of each case, as long as there is no objection from the applicant, we will allow the staff to briefly present location, zoning maps, and photography. Next, we'll hear from the applicant and any witnesses that they may wish to call. Then we'll hear from the staff and any witnesses they may wish to call. And finally, anyone who has completed a speaker request form who wishes to speak on the case. We'll make a note to the file. We have now added another board member, Mr. Walker has joined us, Walker Wilson has joined us. So, we have five members in our quorum now. All right, at this time, we're going to go directly into our first case. This is Case Z 2022-16. Buddy Page is acting as the agent for Donna Marie Early Parker Life Estate and Misty Spooniebarger, the owners, 6823 Pine Forest Road, 1.06 plus minus acres, from commercial to HCLI, heavy commercial, light industrial district. Mr. Page, do you have any objection to the staff presenting maps and photography? He's indicated he does not, so we'll ask the staff members to present the maps. Allison, could you please be sworn in since you'll be testifying?
I do.
Nothing like putting you under the gun as soon as you walk in the door, right? Good morning.
Morning.
All right, we are asking for the maps and photography on the first case, 16, so whenever you're ready.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, this is the location map showing the location in red on Pine Forest Road. And this is the zoning map showing the current zoning of commercial. This is the future land use map showing it's a commercial, future land use. And this is existing land use showing the surrounding parcels and the parcel, subject parcel outlined in red. This is the aerial photograph of the subject property. And this is the public notice sign posted on site. This is looking onto the parcel on Pine Forest Road. This is looking south from the subject property, across the subject property. This is another view looking toward the rear of the subject property. And this is a, looking on the northern side of the property, looking toward the rear. These are just some other views of the property on the northern boundary line. Looking south along Pine Forest Road. Looking across Pine Forest Road from the subject property. Looking north along Pine Forest Road from the property. Looking northeast across Pine Forest Road. Looking southeast along Pine Forest Road from the subject property. Looking southwest from Pine Forest Road, and that's north of the subject property. A parcel on the east side of Pine Forest, north of the subject site. And I took a lot of those pictures just trying to show you the surrounding areas from the property site. And that's the maps and photography.
All right, thank you, Allison. Members of the board, I failed to ask about ex parte communication on this. So, members of the board, has there been any ex parte communication between you, the applicant, applicants, agents, attorneys, witnesses, fellow Planning Board members, or anyone from the general public prior to the hearing? Have you visited the subject property, or please also disclose if you're a relative or business associate to any of the parties? And, good morning, Mr. Adams, joined us from the school board.
Good morning.
No to all.
All right, thank you.
No to all.
No to all.
Chairman, no to all?
No to all.
No to all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Staff, was notice of hearing sent to all interested parties on this case?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and was it also properly posted on the subject property?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Mr. Page, if you'll come forward, please. Good morning, sir, if you'll please be sworn in.
I do.
Thank you. Morning, Mr. Page, if you'll please state your full name and address for the record?
Buddy Page, 5337 Hamilton Lane, Pace, Florida.
Thanks, sir. Did you receive a copy of the rezoning hearing package with the findings of fact?
I did.
Okay, and do you understand that you have the burden of providing substantial competent evidence that the proposed zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, furthers the goals, objectives, and policies of that plan, and is not in conflict with the Land Development Code?
I do.
Go ahead, sir, please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, do you have any speakers signed up for this?
I do not see anyone who has signed up for this one that... Yeah, we could potentially expedite, because if you're in agreement with the staff's findings. Okay, is there anyone that wishes to speak on Case Z 2022-16? Hearing none, the Chair will close, any kind of public comment, and the board can entertain expedited approval due to the fact he agrees with the findings.
So moved.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. Our next case is going to be Case 2022-17, which is also Mr. Page, agent for Constant Werner Earner Owner, Werner Owner, get my mouth working there. 8383 Lillian Highway, 29.57 acres from MDR to HDMU. Members on this case, has there been any ex parte communication between you, the applicant, agents, attorneys, witnesses, Planning Board members, or anyone from the public? Also note if you have visited the property, and please disclose if you are a business associate or relative to any of the parties. And again, Mr. Adams?
No to all.
No to all.
No to all.
Chairman, no to all?
No to all.
No to all.
Thank you. Staff, was notice of hearing sent to all interested parties on this case?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and was it also properly posted on the subject property?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Page, any objection to the map?
Let me, let me correct something that I think you misspoke. On this one, it's from MDR and high-density mixed use. It has two zoning categories, on two, heavy commercial, light industrial. I just want to correct that.
Thank you, thank you for correcting that. If I would have turned my page and continued reading, I probably would have seen that, Horace, so thanks for catching that. Correction, MDR and HDMU to HCLI, heavy commercial and light industrial. Thank you for catching that, Horace. Okay, any objection to the maps or photography? He's indicated no, so Allison, you again?
Okay. And again, on these pictures, I did try to take a lot of pictures trying to show you some of the surroundings and a lot of the different views from the site. So, this is the location map for the 2022-17, a location map on Lillian Highway. And this is the zoning map showing the MDR and the HDR parcel. MDR and HDMU. This is the future land use showing the mixed use urban. And this is the existing land use. This is the aerial and the wetlands map. This is the public hearing sign that was posted on the east parcel. This is looking across Lillian from the eastern parcel. This is looking east from the smaller parcel, it's toward Fairfield. This is looking north towards the back of the smaller, the eastern parcel. This is looking west across both properties along Lillian Highway. This is the public hearing sign that's posted on the larger parcel. This is one of the many businesses that are on the subject parcels. This is another business that's on the western parcel. That's just a different view, because the other one was a little blurry. This is looking at existing buildings on site. This is just another business that's on the property. This is the view from across Lillian Highway of a portion of the buildings that are on site. This is looking north onto the subject property from across Lillian. If you can see all the existing buildings. This is just an existing business and building on site. This is just another view. This is just, and all these buildings are actually existing businesses. It's just another business. And again, this is a thrift store, it's one of the businesses that are on the property. This is looking south into a neighborhood that's across Lillian Highway. Another view across Lillian. And this is looking east along Lillian at the residential on Lillian Highway. Looking east along Lillian toward the, from the parking lot of the subject property toward the, I think it's a mobile home park. That's a mobile home park on the south side of Lillian Highway. These are some townhomes on the north side of Lillian, more toward the Fairfield, it's on Lillian, but more toward the Fairfield Drive. This is the intersection of Lillian and Fairfield, you've got the shopping center and the CVS and some retail stores. Looking west along Lillian Highway from the subject property. This is at the intersection of Lillian Highway and Blue Angel. There's a gas station on either side of Blue Angel and Lillian, and then there's a jewelry store. And that's the end of photography. I would have tried to get some more pictures on the south side, but there was really no place to park and walk safely, so...
Thank you. Board members, any questions on the maps or photography? Okay, Mr. Page? I'll remind you, you're still under oath, sir, so if you'll please state your name and address for the record for this case.
Mr. Chairman, Buddy Page, 5337 Hamilton Lane in Pace.
All right, thank you, sir. On this case, have you received a copy of the rezoning hearing package and the findings of fact?
I have.
All right, thank you. Do you understand that you have the burden of providing substantial competent evidence that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comp plan, furthers the goals, objectives, and policies of that plan, and is not in conflict with the Land Development Code?
I do.
Thank you, sir, please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, at the outset, I'd like to compliment a few other photographs here to establish what we believe to be the need for heavy commercial, light, and industrial. I have photos that I did take myself several days back. It just complements what you've already seen, but perhaps in a little more detail.
So, you wish to enter those as evidence? How many pictures are there, Mr. Page?
I think there are six.
Six, and you personally took these pictures on site?
I did.
Okay, and when were they taken?
They were taken last Wednesday.
Okay, all right. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the pictures, all as one exhibit into evidence.
I would move that we, I would move that we do it, and I think it's pertinent to this case, given the area.
All right, thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second, Mr. Sammons, yes. All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. If you'll just pass them to one of the staff members. And let's go ahead and label those. Applicant Exhibit 1, so we can keep track of them. All right, Mr. Page, this is now Exhibit 1 in the case.
Mr. Chairman, as you'll see in the cover photograph, this is a machine shop that's been on site for thirty, thirty-two years. And it represents something that does require certainly a heavy commercial, light, industrial zoning category. The second picture shows a U-Haul-it facility that has outside storage. They do maintenance underneath the building that you see with the open front on it. And it is a heavy commercial, light, industrial need for that. Also, the next picture shows a thrift shop that does have outside storage. The next picture you will see with the two trucks on it is a custom cabinet shop where they bring in wood and other heavier materials around behind this. They construct things on site, generally it goes out the front door. That type of use with the sound of routers and what have you is a heavy commercial, light, industrial type of activity. The next picture you see of a warehouse that says Superior Interiors. This is a, an operation that, my understanding is, that they sew a lot of materials that go into boats, such as cushions, tops, bimines, and that type of thing. And those boats for that type of activity, when they need that, they are pulled around back behind the building. They do have some outside storage needs for that as those things are being completed. And then the last one is an Anderson Service Center. That is a, according to the sign, they are an appliance repair. And again, the rear of the building is where a lot of the trucks come in and back up with things that need to have repair made to them, all of which, Mr. Chairman, is presented with an effort to further endorse the existing use out that way as heavy commercial and light industrial. Moving on, Mr. Chairman, the county's findings. We see here that it's going from medium-density residential to a heavy commercial, light, industrial category. We will see inside, when we get to the details of this, that right off the bat, we have to ask ourselves, why is this going from medium-density residential? The county's admission inside of this says that these buildings have been there. The first one was constructed in 1930. It's been under continuous use since that period of time for the buildings for industrial-type categories. But again, similar to a case we presented last month, this is a situation where in 1988, '89, and '90, when the surveys were done for producing an existing use on the ground, it was overlooked, for whatever reason. And why it was classified with all of these uses on site for a medium-density residential will remain unknown. As I mentioned then, as I would mention now, none of the current staff had anything to do with this back at that period of time. But the fact of the matter is, it was overlooked, and for that omission, that's why we're here today, trying to assign the correct zoning category to something that should have been picked up and made right in the late 1980s. Mr. Chairman, under Criteria A, we have certainly an agreement with that. It says that we are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Item B, consistency with the Land Development Code.
Rachel, would you follow along on the criteria with what he's presenting? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, right at the very end, if I can back up one paragraph, the findings under the consistency with the comprehensive plan, the last paragraph has a sentence that says, "The request to rezone to HCLI is to resolve an inconsistency presented by a split zone, the larger parcel, as well as being an existing long-term, a long-time use into conformance." There is some admission there that it's been there a long time. So, Mr. Chairman, under Criteria B, consistency with the Land Development Code, under the findings, the county cites that the site is about thirty acres in size. The request to rezone in hopes to bring the parcel into conformance with the current use of commercial and light manufacturing. We have five comments, Mr. Chairman, on this particular one. Number one, there's an admission that the first building was constructed and they've been there since, in parcels, since 1930. Number two, it does say that, an admission that we do meet the locational criteria for everything that's there. There is a statement that says the parcels in the area were already established non-residential. We certainly would agree with that. I doubt if there was a lot of residential on the south side of Lillian Highway thirty years or more ago. Number three, the comment, it says HCLI will not be recommended, even though there's an admission that the buildings there are now and have been in heavy commercial, light, industrial use for years and years. Number four, comments regarding the west side... Uh, number four, uh, comments regarding the, uh, uh, the west side, uh, HCLI would not be recommended. And the reason, uh, I'm guessing the reason that they, uh, are stating that is that if you look at the property that's adjoining this to the west, I think it's called Sterling Tree Service. Uh, and that certainly is a heavy, commercial, light, and industrial type of use, and it's, it joins this property to the western, uh, western side. And then number five, as we already stated, uh, this area has been, uh, maintained for thirty years plus in terms of, uh, general commercial activities. Comments for criteria C, uh, Mr. Chairman, states basically that compatibility with surrounding uses, and the findings generally state, very bluntly, it's not compatible. But if you take a look and jump down to criteria D, which says appropriate of spot zoning, uh, you will read under the findings for that, it was determined that the proposed HCLI zoning would not be considered spot zoning. And we agree with that. But then it follows up saying, therefore, it can be compatible with surrounding areas as they already have developed with heavy, commercial, and residential uses. So it can be compatible. Uh, so the notion back up to criteria C about compatibility with surrounding uses, the county's own statement says that it, it will be. Under criteria E, uh, appropriate with changed conditions, uh, and we agree with that. There's not a lot of activity that has changed in that area, uh, with the exception of the Sterling Tree Service, which has been there probably six or seven years. So, Mr. Chairman, with those modifications, that would present the staff, or rather, the, uh, uh, the owner's comments regarding the staff's findings. We think with the modifications that we have offered, uh, at some point, we'll ask the board to consider, uh, adopting, uh, our findings as I have presented to the board this morning.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Page. Uh, board members, anything, any questions so far on what Mr. Page has presented?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm just curious, since it's been this way since nineteen thirty, nineteen forty, I don't know. I remember when, uh, Blue Angel was not, did not even go through that area. I remember what was there, because I grew up in Myrtle Grove. But why, why is there a need now to try to get the designation you're wanting now? Is there some planning in the works, or something's going to be done with this new zoning?
No, there's nothing, nothing in the works.
Okay.
Uh, the gentleman wants to buy this as an investment. The income off of the rental units, uh, there's being no, nothing proposed, no changes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Page, um, I notice there's a couple gentlemen signed up. Are those witnesses for you, or are they just speaking in public comment portion? Okay.
Unless we have other comments, Mr. Chairman.
So, did you sign up to speak? Okay, give, give a pink slip and sign up to speak, please.
Did you have witnesses at this point? Okay, we're not going to go into public comment quite yet. I just thought they may be witnesses for you, that's why I was asking.
We, we may call on them, depending on the testimony that's about to be presented.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, thank you. Staff, who's presenting? Is it Allison?
Yes.
All right, good morning.
Um, first I'd like to-
Turn, turn your microphone on.
Thank you. Uh, first I'd like to, uh, show you the zoning map, the parcel to the west, that's the MDR, and the little portion that's the HDMU. Right to the left of that, to the west, the HCLI, that is the Sterling Tree Service. That portion right next to was rezoned in two thousand and seven. They already had the, another portion further to the west that was their tree service, and they wanted to expand their business. So in two thousand and five, they had a rezoning, and then two thousand and seven, they wanted to extend it. So they did the rezoning to HCLI to match their existing property. So, and I'll, I'll kind of address that in one of the comments that Mr. Page made. I just want to kind of, to, and also, if you look at the smaller portion of the HDMU, if you look to the, it's all HDMU, if you look to the north, it abuts the MDR residential zoning. So if that were to go to HCLI, you have that right against a residential, so.
And let me, and let me, let me, let me, let me jump in. Thank you, Allison, for that. Um, we met with these people several times, Mr. Page and the, and the real estate agent, and the owner as well. This is a very, very complex rezoning case, being the fact that these are non-conforming uses, non-conforming uses. We under, we got to understand now, now with non-conforming use, just because, just because that they are there, non-conforming means that you, you just don't make the difference to be there. They got to, still got to meet all of the current land development code standards. That's one of the things that's listed in the criteria about non-conforming uses. Um, and, and as Allison will proceed, because I may have to step out, that's why I'm, that's why I'm interjecting some things right now. As Allison will proceed, when I met with these gentlemen, there's a process inside the land development code explicitly, so that non-conforming uses can continue to remain. They, I mean, they continue to operate, they continue. We, we do it all the time, just down in county, because you know we have those zones. We have split zones, of course, and I know one, of course, well, how can we then make correct things like this? When you have that many properties, and we had, we got zoned in so late, many of those use they was brought in. That's why there are some provisions to keep those type of uses in existing without, without changing their zoning category, uh, to those use, especially if it's surrounded by existing neighborhoods, existing subdivisions. They can continue, there's a process for those things to continue wholeheartedly. And we, and I write letters every day, all the time, for those things. So I just want to put that, and we'll be talking about that more. So it's, and, and, and it was a very challenging one, and, and hopefully there will be, uh, a good discussion, and not just work, a carte blanche, because they are there. According to the code, that should not just be the only factor, just because they are there, just because they are in operation. That should not be the only factor to grant this rezoning quest, if one, if you want to proceed to HCLI NA. That's why we offered another alternative, which we met, we think this could work better, and it would be no problem with staff, uh, uh, doing this if the board so desired to grant it. Go ahead, Ms. Allison.
Okay, so for criteria one, the consistency with the comprehensive plan, uh, the proposed amendment is consistent, uh, with the comprehensive plan for mixed-use urban. So, um, the request to rezone for mixed-use urban, it does allow for the mixes of residential and, as well as commercial uses. Criteria B, consistency with the land development code. HDMU, MDR, um, and HCLI NA, which stands for non-alcoholic. The applicant is requesting the HCLI zoning, uh, the NA designation, which prohibits the, uh, establishment of microbreweries, micro-distilleries, bars, nightclubs, and adult entertainment. We find that it's not consistent with the intent and purpose of the land development code. So the current zoning is MDR and HDMU, split on the one, and then HDMU on the smaller eastern portion. The request to rezone is in hopes in bringing the parcels in compliance with the current use of commercial and the light industrial. Now, when I say commercial and light industrial, that doesn't mean heavy industrial, you know? Light industrial is done inside of a building. It can be wholesale warehousing, it can be repairs. Um, currently, as I've listed, there are, and as Mr. Page has shown in his pictures, there are appliance, there's cabinet, appliance repairs, there's custom cabinet building, there's equipment rental. Um, the pictures he showed, um, shows, um, engine parts, um, car parts inside this building. Um, it looks like they have machinery in the back. So we find that, other than the HCLI NA, the commercial would be more appropriate for the general commercial activities, such as the retailing of the commodities and services. It'd be able to better maintain compatibility with the surrounding uses, and as a transition next to the existing HCLI. In the commercial zoning, it also allows, um, I lost my place. So it allows, commercial allows for printing, binding, wholesaling, warehousing, um, nursery and gardens, and other uses, outdoor storage, if minor and customary incidental to the allowed principal use, and if in the rear yard, covered in screen from off-site view. Which is right now, you can't tell anything in the back of these properties. So if there are trucks going in and out, or if there are things in the back, uh, you, you don't notice that. So we feel that the HCLI is a much heavier, more intense zoning category for the neighborhood. You have neighbors, you have to the north, you have the residential, yes, you have the gas stations, you have the tree service, you know, which hasn't always been there. You have the neighbors across the street, you have the CVS, you know, those are neighborhood commercial. So I think they could still use the property as is, they can still use it as a, an income, you know? Uh, I, I think the commercial, for, for the, for the type of road and for the businesses around there, I think commercial wouldn't be as an intense use. Um, criterion C, compatible with surrounding uses. Here again, it's not compatible with the surrounding uses as an HCLI. You, you do have the HCLI to the west, you have MDR, commercial, HDR, HDMU, and recreation. The existing uses on the parcel are currently legal, non-conforming, because they have been there, priority zoning, um, and are allowed to remain until either they want to expand, or until they close. The proposed rezoning would be more intense in existing residential and neighborhood commercial uses along Lillian. Now, appropriate of spot zoning, we did say that it would, it would not be considered spot zoning due to the fact that it does have the HCLI adjacent to it to the west. So it would be, the HCLI NA would be compatible with that HCLI zoning, not necessarily everything in the area. So I, it probably could have been reworded to that, instead of all surrounding properties. Um, appropriate with change and changed conditions. We didn't find that there's any changes or any new development going in the area. And so the request to HCLI wouldn't be compatible with the existing development patterns of the neighborhood and neighborhood commercial. We do see that the owner applicant can still achieve what he's hoping to achieve, even if, you know, he, he goes to commercial, he can still do his commercial. He's got the outdoor, some of his, this thrift store and his, the rental, uh, the U-Haul business. Um, yes, they've been there, but I think that the HCLI, regardless if it's NA, if for some reason it didn't happen for this gentleman, anything that's allowed in the HCLI, as you know, would be allowed there. With the NA, with the exception of the bars, nightclubs, and such. So we feel that the commercial, uh, would be a, a more compatible use.
And if I may, Allison, thank you. Also, and, and, and as the owners, uh, already stated, Mr. Page already stated, from the, and from the photos, as you can see, many of those buildings are already there. Everything was in the confines of existing buildings. So commercial allows for that, allows for those uses to continue with the minimum minor outdoor storage, which in which they're currently doing. So, so, so yes, some of the uses may be heavy, commercial, light, industrial, but they are already there. And there's in the confines of the building, and the commercial allows those type of uses. On the inside of a building, you saw these photographs, the first that he presented. Many of these things are what we call minor, and as Allison stated, they, they, they are accessory type, type uses with minor outdoor storage, which is already limited, that's already ongoing now. So, so to, and, and with the, with the adjacent subdivisions, and what's surrounded by the adjacent subdivisions, as Allison stated, we understand their situation completely. That's why it sort of, but that's why we said, if we can get something that's much more compatible, much more suitable, because if someone come along and decide to remove all those buildings, and we, we zone this heavy, commercial, light, industrial, that would be an enormous impact on those. For example, you got recycling. We know how that has been contentious in many neighborhoods. Do we want to, do we want to cause a proliferation of those heavy type uses right adjacent, or to continue that trend, when, in which there's another alternative to achieve the same type, uses can stay there, the buildings are there? Pull up, pull up that buffering map.
And while she's pulling that up, I do want to make a correction, and I apologize. Um, this is going to HCLI, not HCLI NA.
Right.
I was with the other case. So if this is allowed to go to HCLI, then yes, bars and nightclubs, breweries, selling alcohol would be allowed.
Yes, and that's-
My apologies.
And that is what, when I met with them, trying to come up with other alternatives, that is what we, and I told them that, they said, well, we still want heavy, commercial, light, industrial. They stated that, that's why we, we tried to come up with different alternatives, so that they can yet do what they need to do, and, and, and to try to get something more appropriate. Because if you look at this map, um, you see those buildings on front of Lillian. We were, we, we are very amenable to the wetlands, because that wetland is there. You, you're not gonna, you can't touch that. That's, that's understandable. But if you, but if you look at that, at that, at that portion with that map, I just want to try to present the facts. Not just trying to be, not trying to be cantankerous or onerous, uh, we just want to try to present it, because we want to look at what could happen, the impacts, adverse impacts to that neighborhood. Know you may say, well, they are not here, but we, our staff still got to try to look at for long-term and existing uses. This surround, that's adjacent to a well-developed, existing commercial, and if you remove the site and bring in heavy, commercial, light, industrial, no protections, trust me, that will have an impact, a significant impact on an existing and surrounding commu, uh, 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 neighborhood because of all the adverse impacts, uses that could have the potential to go there. And that's our only concern, but existing commercial, inside building, maintain their minor outdoor storage. Staff could truly support that wholeheartedly as an alternative.
Yes, sir, and, and also, um, so yes, as Mr. Jones stated, most of the west parcel, they, they are in an AE flood zone with a significant measure of the forested wetlands, and the eastern parcel, um, in an ex-flood zone. So the applicant did present a detailed wetland survey done in September by Wetland Science. And so whatever development may or may not occur, but if they do any development, they would have to show avoidance and minimization, as well as buffering from the wetlands, and to make sure that they don't impact any of the neighboring parcels.
So, and even with that, let's be, let's be clear, that still is not, that's the DRC project. We, I, we, we still have to go by what is presented, all of those things that are presented. We got to review those things and make sure that, that whether it was advertised, we have to try to present this as, as it is. Perhaps that could be, but it still would not allow, there's still going to be impact, regardless of buffering. There's still going to be bringing in more industrial-type uses, there still would be off-site impacts. Because there's, it's not, it's, it's outdoors, dust, and glass, and noise, and everything. And that is, that's, that could be a potential nuisance with those heavy, commercial, light, industrial type uses adjacent to that existing subdivision, like we have, basically trying to eliminate right now in many categories, in many existing communities.
All right, thank you, Steph. Did you have questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. So let me get this straight, so for, I agree with the, uh, for eighteen years driven by this, and everything you see, this aerial view is great, because all you see typically, ninety percent of us are driving down Lillian Highway the other way, and all you see is this, what I would definitely categorize as light industrial, and has been there forever, sandwiched by Myrtle Grove to the east, Lillian Highway subdivisions, west of Blue Angel. But that has been there for a long time. So I, you know, I know that it's incumbent upon us to consider what could potentially be with heavy, commercial, light, industrial. But I also think it's equally, uh, our responsibility- But I also think it's equally, uh, our responsibility, if I'm investing property, investing in this property to, to buy it, I want to clarify what you're suggesting that they do. So if I'm buying this, I would, I mean, apparently they felt it was worth over twenty-five hundred dollars to invest in this to get the zoning changed. You're stating that you recommend, instead of HCLI, to go to commercial, but they would still need, uh, approval for some non-conforming usage, or the commercial would cover it, is what you're saying.
Those uses, those uses that are presented, they can continue to exist. They can continue because, because from what I'm being told, from what I'm being told, I, it doesn't appear that those type of, what he's presented, what has gone inside those buildings, cannot go in commercial on the inside of those buildings. From what being told to me, what's going on, we did not look on the inside of the buildings. But from what was presented to me, and looking at all of the uses in the commercial, that those use can continue to exist because they, but the thing is that you cannot have many of those stuff on the outside because it's already confined within the building. Now, that's what was told to me on the uses that are being on with those businesses. Now, you may have a mixture of the things, but it's primarily to me, from what was told to me, is commercial type uses.
Okay, this real quickly before I turn back over Mr. Page. If they chose to do that, would their twenty-five hundred dollars be thrown out the window and they have to reapply and pay again to apply to commercial?
No, sir.
That was, uh, one question, but, and the other, I'm certainly interested in the public and Mr. Page has.
Mr. Page?
Mr. Chairman, a couple, a couple of points. The photo that you see on the overhead there, uh, we submitted a copy, and I just heard, uh, Allison mentioned it as well, we submitted a copy of the wetland survey done by, uh, environmental consultants, uh, wetland scientists. That, that photograph is erroneous. Uh, it doesn't present the true picture of where the easterly line is for, uh, that wetlands map. I don't know why it was not included in your package, but I have it here. Uh, and I also have a number of black and white copies that show the very same thing. The only reason I mention this is that, uh, there seems to be some thought that there's plenty of room to do a lot of things, uh, when in fact, uh, the property is restricted a great deal on the easterly side of the Gulf Power line, all the way up to where, when it gets up behind the subdivisions, uh, that wetlands line touches that, so it can't really go north, uh, to any extent. Uh, but I, I would like to, to, uh, ask if we could distribute this to show and counter what you're seeing on that overhead there.
I believe the wetlands inventory was part of your packet.
Can you pull it up for us?
I'm, was trying to look for, hold on.
If it's in the package, Mr. Page, we'll just, uh, accept that one, uh, in the package.
Yeah, 'cause it was. Here she comes. She'll be able to find it. The wetland survey that he submitted.
And let's be clear, while she's presenting this now, we gotta understand this.
That's it, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's the picture right there that, that, uh, more accurately depicts the wetlands area to the east side of the, uh, Gulf Power that, that runs southeast, southwest and northeast. So that was my point there.
So that's a significant difference.
It is a significantly different picture than what we started out with.
And, and let's be clear now, again, but you do have that upland portions, and I've been, we've been doing this. You still can, you have the potential to, to still do some work in the wetlands. Yes, it may be, but this is still does not, does, does not cover the potential of those uses that could still be impacted. Because you can, you can, you can do, people do it all the time, they, they, they do it all the time, that's why the DRC process.
Mr. Chairman, that's the very reason the county has adopted a wetlands buffer. There's nothing planned to, to be constructed up in that area, uh, mainly because of just the economics of it.
Of course.
Uh, there will be no entrance road that could go back up in there that would serve the area very well. But you can see that the hatched area in red also has a twenty-five foot, uh, impact buffer uh, to the edge of that. So to run that up the flagpole and say, but hold it, we, we need to protect the wetlands. The county's, uh, the county's own buffering sets that up. So I think that's probably a, a non-argument at this juncture.
Mr. Page, on this particular document, I see it's part of what appears to be a real estate listing that's in here. But could you tell us a little bit more about the document? You mentioned that it was, uh, created by Wetland Sciences, who obviously is an accredited company that does, uh, wetland delineation studies. But, um, was the actual study accepted into evidence as part of the record, is what I'm, I'm getting at?
Yes, sir, it was actually submitted with the application because the director requested the wetlands determination to be done.
Yes, and I wanted that to be included because I wanted you to, to actually see depiction when we met with them. Um, that's why we tried to get them, well, let's, let's, if you got any potential, you'll have a, a pre-application so we can get more documentation. But, but that was not the case. Uh, we really tried to work with them so we can really see what was going on, um, with that. Mr. Page and I, we had numerous conversations. Um, but I wanted, as you can see, an actual good depiction of the wetlands that's really, really shown on this property. That's why we said, well, we can go with the commercial type uses, buildings are already there, existing uses. So that just gives you, still can get the same zoning that you needed, uh, and still provide the protection with adjoining property owners as well.
Okay, let me, let me rephrase my question. I guess what I was getting at is this appears to be a picture in the real estate listing presentation, but the actual wetlands delineation report has been accepted into the evidence, is that correct? Is that your understanding?
That's my understanding.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we have that as the basis of where this picture came from. Um, and it's not just something that's in a real estate, uh, presentation, no offense, Mr. Watson, but it's, uh, I'm trying to establish a basis of that wetlands report for us here, so, okay, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that was my response to what I, I just heard. If, uh, did that conclude the county's presentation?
I believe at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I would add to this then, that the theory of having a commercial zoning classification, uh, that would allow them to do some minor types of things, that word minor, and I've been around this long enough to know that that, a lot of times is in the eye of the enforcement officer that's on site. Uh, minor expansions, minor outside storage, uh, it very seldom gets a, a well-defined, uh, quantitative measure. What we're seeking here is a zoning category, uh, that will allow for that outside storage uh, without it being, uh, potentially challenged, number one. Number two, uh, the notion that, uh, these buildings, oh, they can, they can exist exactly the way they are. Uh, but if you wanted to do any type of modification to the building, for example, if the machine shop owner wanted to extend a shed out back where he has equipment that's brought in, can't get it in the building, but he needs more outside storage, that triggers a, a no bell, that you can't, you can't, uh, expand a non-conforming use. And that's the case for every building that's out there right now. If you want to do anything that increases the footprint, uh, you have to come down and start filling out forms and having, uh, site inspections uh, and so forth, uh, that's the major reason for the HCLI. And again, the county has acknowledged that, uh, that HCLI use has been on those buildings for years and years and years. And now we're hearing, well, maybe, maybe not HCLI, maybe you just need commercial. Uh, but again, the, the storage and the expansion of the buildings, uh, would prohibit, uh, the, any investor wanting to uh, buy the property and be locked into the building, can never increase in size. Uh, and that's what, uh, we have a real concern with.
So, you know, I've been doing this quite a long time, and the intent, I believe, here by the county is to buffer a residential neighborhood from some very heavy industrial use, which is, is a good thing. But after kind of looking at this and, and understanding what the property is, I don't know that it's feasible, financially feasible, that any big impacts would be near that subdivision. So I think that kind of limits, uh, you know, the impact on the subdivision, so just
Mr. Chairman, we, we would agree with that, but I also would add a footnote to that, that thought, that if the impact to that subdivision was of a concern.
Can I ask the question? I can see how this happened in the past because it's sandwiched between Myrtle Grove and the other residential and overlook. And, and we've said this before every meeting, we're gonna run into this more and more and more. So I understand the county's position, you have to do it black and white to the law. But I'm sorry, but Mr. Rushing's right. Why can't we have a pre-development meeting now? I don't want to slow them down and split this where the, the east-west border was prior to, and do a split zoning, and keep the HCLI up front and the other back. We're gonna have to do something different, or we're gonna run into this, and be, it's gonna be right or wrong every time. And I don't think, again, we will listen to the public speaker, but I think we better start becoming a little more creative, in my opinion.
We, again, Mr. Powell, Mr. Powell, we, we, we definitely tried to go outside the box before getting here. We definitely tried to bring that to
Is that, is that possible, what he's suggesting, drawing a, a zoning line through the property and
We would have, that, that is, and now remember, now we tried to eliminate split, split zoning, we tried to eliminate. We definitely tried to do that. But if, if, if that is a, something that maybe we can explore, uh, we can't do it at this point, we would have to continue this case to look at that, at this point. Because we would have to have the description surveys and boundaries, we just can do it at this point without, without exploring the option. Um, and see if, if that is a doable situation, because that may be, that may be the, another alternative. But it's just hard to do it at this time.
Mr. Page, is that something that you would consider a, a continuance, or do you want to push forward with the request as it is today?
Mr. Chairman, this, uh, transaction is a ten thirty-one exchange, today is decision day for them. We would, uh, if that were possible to do today, and not talk about, you know, we need to explore it, we need to look at it. Uh, if we drew a line and had commercial up top and heavy commercial light industrial down, uh, south, I'd have to consult with the buyer that's here today, but this is a ten thirty-one exchange. And for those of you that have been involved with those things, the clock is absolutely critical. So to talk about, oh, well, we could take a look at that maybe next week and come back in a month or so and give you a decision. I, I don't think they would be in a position to entertain that over on our side.
Okay, and this, this, obviously, this idea was not discussed in those early
We had many discussions, we had, we, we discussed
So this specifically was discussed?
Uh, yes, sir, they
Splitting the property into two different zoning districts?
He did bring it to my attention that he thought maybe HCLI on the bottom and leaving for the residential on the top of the HDMIU, but that's as far as it went.
Yes, we, again, Mr., because we, we, we know that the buildings were there, we know that, we know that. And many times now, also too, um, back to Mr. Reed Rushing, with the R six zoning, R six does allow for commercial type uses. Over the years now, inside of a building, when people start doing things on the inside, sometime those uses got a little bit greater, but R six, the old zoning category, did allow for commercial type uses. So, 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 so it wasn't, it, it wasn't zoned erroneously, it's just maybe they bought in some different type of uses that were, just wasn't as appropriate, but R six did allow for neighborhood type commercial back then.
Okay. Well, Mr. Page has indicated he wants to move forward. So, uh, we do have public speakers signed up to speak. Um, for those members of the public who wish to speak on this matter, please note, the planning board bases its decisions on the approval conditions and exceptions described in section two dash seven point two of the Land Development Code. During our deliberations, the planning board does not consider general statements of support or opposition. Accordingly, please limit your testimony to the approval conditions and exceptions described in section two dash seven point two. Please also note that only those individuals who are present and give testimony on the record will be allowed to speak before the, uh, BCC meeting. Also, please note that we do have a three-minute time, uh, per, uh, speaker. And when the timer goes off, we'll ask you to wrap up your, your comments immediately. First speaker is, uh, Richard Yuge, is that pronounced correctly? Yuge, okay. Good morning, sir, if you'll please be sworn in and then state your name and address for the record.
I do. Yuge, J-U-G-E.
Good morning, sir.
Thank you for your time, thank you all for your time. Uh, we met several times, uh, in the course of this, trying to do it, I'm the buyer, by the way. Um, I'm from New Orleans, I'm building a house on Pudido Key, I'm renting an apartment currently, so my address on there is one three nine four four River Road. Um, I'm, I'm an investor trying to buy this property, I have, there's certain limitations, somebody mentioned a borrow pit. There's a twenty acre limitation for a borrow pit. This thing has about nine developable acres on the east side, and it has about, I don't have it in front of me, maybe five or six on the, on the west side uh, that could be developed. My intent, and I know the intent doesn't matter, but my intent is to do what you've heard, to keep these buildings in commerce. But I did ask Ms. Allison early on, we're talking about the existing zoning, can I permit a building, you know, a new building, or expand this building with the current zoning, and the answer was no. So, uh, we were posed recently with the, hey, what about a commercial zoning? And I actually even said to Buddy, that might be a good idea, let's do it on the east side and have the west side be HCLI to buffer away from the neighborhood. Um, however, in reading it, and I read it like a layman, there are so many things that those buildings are built for that you just can't put in those buildings with the lighter commercial zoning. So if you look at that map, the land that is generally, you know, the most ideal to develop is right behind those buildings on the east side, so that wouldn't make sense. We did try and talk about splitting this thing north-south. We actually have a survey with a line drawn on it that would put it at the bottom of that residential neighborhood. I have zero intent of going back to that neighborhood. Second thing is practically, if you look at it, maybe I would, could build a thirty-foot building or something with the setbacks that would be required from the west side, excuse me, from the east side, and then also the buffer on the wetlands on the east side. So as a matter of practicality, there's really little to nothing that could be done back there. So all these concerns, which are legitimate, about what could we do back there, just practically can't go back there. So, um, you know, speaking in favor of this, I am under the gun timing-wise, so, that's it.
Any questions?
Yes, sir, I was gonna ask, what was the, when you, you have a survey, existing survey for the, the north-south theoretical solution. Where was the hang-up on that, just for practicality or just
A concern of a split zoning not being allowed or, or desired. But again, as a matter of practicality, if you did approve this today, I would ask you, what could I possibly build back there as a matter of practicality with that narrow thing? And, and to say I could go mitigate the wetlands, anybody that knows anything about the cost of mitigating wetlands for what the value of this property is, would be infeasible beyond any kind of discussion, so.
In your estimation right now, theoretically, if that north-south, uh, compromise was proposed, it would be acceptable to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And to some commercial zoning, you know, whatever, and, and again, I'm just thinking of whether it'd be outdoor storage of some kind that would be allowed in a commercial zoning. And can I say one more thing before I get out of here, sir? I'm a little excited.
That's all right, go ahead.
Do you still have time? Uh, to, to the east side of this property, there is a metal warehouse building, there is a homeless person living in the back of it that H, you know, Department of Health and Human Services should go see that person, they're living in a car and they look like they're near death. The next property over is a Dollar General, the next property over is a used car lot. So I get that there are neighboring residential uses to the south, which I think the buffer would stay the same in terms of setbacks off the street. And again, there's residential in the back that we practically can't get to. And you've heard what's to the west of this property in terms of tree services, you know, commercial outlets. I, I just respectfully, I think this is very much in keeping with what that property is, and my intent is to use it for the existing use.
Okay, does anyone else have a question for Mr. Yuge? Okay, thank you, sir, we may have questions as we go forward, but, Mr. Gary Watson? Morning, Mr. Watson, please be sworn in and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Mr. Reddick. I do. Thank you, Gary Watson, 1308 North Barcelona Street, Pensacola. I'm the, uh, real estate broker representing the buyer. Uh, I too grew up in Myrtle Grove and, uh, drove by and, and, and did business with these people for many, many, many years. Uh, it's just astounding to me, uh, when the owners of the property called me to sell it and I realized what the zoning was, I was astounded. So I think we're, what we're trying to do here, what we're asking you to do here is to correct something that should have been done a long time ago. Should have been done when it was initially zoned. Uh, I think anything beyond that would be, uh, an injustice to, uh, not only the, the buyer, but the current owner. So, uh, appreciate your consideration in this matter and, uh, uh, we'll see what happens. Thank y'all very much.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Any questions, sir?
Any questions for Mr. Watson?
How are you, sir?
All right, thank you. Kevin Seaman? Morning, sir. Please be sworn in and state your name and address for the record.
I do. Seaman, S-E-E-M-A-N.
Thank you. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Kevin Seaman. I live at 8154 Imperial Drive, which is in the very southern, western portion of Car Acres. They're on Imperial Drive. I have the, there's six properties, uh, in Imperial Drive that border this, uh, area. Um, I bought that, uh, bought my residence in 1986, so I've been out there for quite a long time. When we first moved in, that area was a junkyard. Um, originally, George Hazopolis owned that property and he had a junkyard that went about halfway up into that, uh, property, uh, almost to the wetlands. Uh, in the early nineties, he started clearing that property. He took all the trees out. And I was concerned because it was wetlands back there. It had, uh, pitcher plants, uh, cypress trees, wet, water oaks. And I called the, uh, DEP to come investigate it. They did. And our, where our property is, at the south end of, uh, Imperial Drive there, is about 150 to 200 yards to where the wetlands are. And then, of course, as you saw in that one, uh, plan for the wetlands, it comes even closer to the north of the Imperial Drive, uh, subdivision there. So we are concerned, uh, about clearcutting those trees again, even if they don't go into the, uh, wetlands area. Uh, when they did clearcut that, the traffic noises from Lilian Highway and, uh, Angel Parkway increased dramatically. Currently, the woods have regrown since it's been almost, uh, 25 years, so our noise level has decreased. But all the people on that, in that subdivision are concerned about noise levels increasing if something goes in there. The north-south zoning plan would be a good plan, in my opinion. But if not, then we oppose any, uh, rezoning of that area, especially up there by, uh, Car Acres subdivision. But, uh, there's a lot of wildlife in that area. When we first moved in, we had foxes, deer and everything in that area. So I, I know there's a lot of, uh, wildlife. There's even been some, uh, gopher turtles in that area. So it's a good consideration about the north-south zoning. And in my opinion, as long as they keep that wooded area and wetlands that alone, it's of great importance for the, uh, community.
Any questions of Mr. Seaman?
All right.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comment. Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this matter? Mr. Page, opportunity to come back and question any of your, uh, speakers or witnesses or the staff or add anything?
Mr. Chairman, the, the thing that we would ask is the board consider adopting the findings A through E as modified by the presentation that I made to you, as opposed to the existing wording in the staff recommendation. But I would also add for the last speaker, uh, we have a wetland survey of, of property in that area. Number one, there is no intention of going in there and cutting anything down. Uh, number two, uh, he's in an area where, uh, it's approximately 96 feet from his property line to the easterly boundary of the, uh, protected area for, uh, the zoning, the, uh, division line for- the buffering. One thing I would add to that, even though the line shows something about 90, 95 feet or so, uh, you have to have three conditions in order to, uh, have a line established. Uh, and when you run out of any one of those conditions, the other two, uh, can still proceed. For example, uh, three things you have to have. You have to have hydroric soils. You have to have a hydraulic connection to water to the state. And you have to have a preponderance of, uh, a species diversity of some type. Even though the, the line is drawn, the hydroric soils continue to, uh, go to the east. I mention all this only to the extent that, uh, the notion of being able to build something up in that area has got to have a good foundation in the hydroric soils, uh, that are east of the protected line are going to prevent that. Uh, so I think that, uh, two things then for the speaker. Uh, number one, there's no plans on clearcutting anything up in that area. And number two, even if there were, uh, plans to do something there, uh, the footprint would be so small and the distance to travel from Lilian Highway all the way up into that area, uh, especially to run a sewer line, uh, and water lines up in that, uh, distance, make it almost financially, uh, something that would be very uninteresting to, uh, the buyer. Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, again, we would ask that, uh, the board consider adopting the, uh, findings of fact as modified by my presentation this morning. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Any questions for the staff? All right, um-
Mr. Chair, I want to give it one last shot. Um, I, I, I agree, Mr. Page, that it's not financially feasible. It doesn't make any sense whatsoever. However, given the way the county has to approach it, it is not this buyer that we're concerned about, but the next buyer, the next buyer, the next buyer for the sake. And again, I would ask if we have an out that, and we were able to, uh, use it today to approve a split zoning with the boundary that you've already provided that wouldn't, A, be a timing and/or financial constraint on you. I'd love to, uh, actually do something different that works for both parties as opposed to be pushed in a corner to say yes or no. That's my opinion.
Mr. Powell, I tend to agree. I would support that as well. I, you know, this is the second month in a row that we've, uh, no fault of our current staff, but we've seen things that have been, uh, missed, I guess, in the past when it comes to getting zoning right on parcels and things like that. And, uh, we've all said it, you've said it many times, that we need to have a mechanism in place to be able to write these. And although split zoning a parcel is not ideal, um, I'm glad to hear that it was discussed and, and offered and everything because that would be a, a very good solution. Uh, even the gentleman who lives nearby said that that would be something that he could support as well. So, um, I like to see that kind of thing happening because, like you said, there's going to be a lot more of this going forward, I think, uh, so.
And again, and we, we've had, we, we knew that the timing was issued, therefore we tried to work this out with getting here. Now, this is the thing, when we start doing, but we're still going to have, we're still going to have some type of, because we zone the legal description, so we're going to have the line drawn and survey out so that we can make sure that it's on properly. So I would suggest, so that we could do this to correct, where this type of line is drawn and allow, you know, that, 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 because we, we tried, so it's not, if you want this thing, that's option, let's get this continued, let's take a look at it, because we tried, we tried, but, and, and we, we, we tried to figure. So get it continued and so that we can come back with a reasonable, try to, we'll come back next month. We, we, very, very quickly. So we can get that line drawn, so that we can get this matter resolved, uh, uh, so the both parties can, can do. I know we, we made it attempt, that's, that's what I'm trying to say, but we, we're going to do what they asked us to do, um, if we, we don't patrol their property.
Mr. Chairman, Horace, um, if we, if we go down the path of, of accepting the findings and the recommendation to commercial, the whole parcel, the commercial, and then coming back and requesting a split to HCLI, that would get us down the road to where he could purchase the property with the intent of the, of the property moving in the right direction, knowing that, um, this board, if nothing changes in this board, if the HCLI split zone come through and it, it all matched the, the, uh, you know, what we're talking about, that it would be approved in the near future.
Yes, sir. I, I, I don't have no problem bringing this back. Uh, if, 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 if the board's a grant, if, if the board make a recommendation to grant this commercial, uh, 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 then if they want to come back, if the BCC approve it, come back and do it to make it banking and financing and get all of that, uh, uh, we could, we could do that. We can see, I don't, I don't have no problem. We can see if, if, if there's an intent, if, if, if there's an intent, they're not doing anything, Allison and, uh, uh, Ms. Ma, it's hard, it's hard.
Turn your microphone on.
Your microphone's not on either.
If there's an intent for that to occur, rezoning it, make this recommendation for a commercial and they, and they, and they're not going to do anything, they're saying that they're not going to do anything with the property. It still could work for them, then they can come back and get what they wanted. So that rezoning it commercial, it's still, if they're not going to do it, it's, it's still going to get those uses, every use in there they can do, the outside, all that can still remain intact. Everything that's ongoing can yet remain intact wholeheartedly, equally. And then when they get down the road next year, when now you want to come back and do that again, I don't have no problem.
Oh, let me ask a question about, do they have to pay for the process again if they do that?
If, I, I wouldn't, I'll put it this way. Only thing that it may have to pay for is help us with advertising.
But they have to go through the process again. If they're going to do that, couldn't you do it just the opposite? Couldn't you let them have the HCI with the agreement, um, with the, with the agreement that they come back and, and work something out later?
Mr. Gary.
At least they know they're paying for something they're getting.
Mr. Gary, I can do that because I still say that it still does not meet the intent of the black and white language of the National Code with heavy commercial light industrial. It still does not. I could easily, I could gladly work with them on the fees and notifications, getting all that done, then come back.
I, I consider, I consider that a, um, I mean, that's a, that's a big risk for the, um, for the applicant because the county's not willing to submit to work with, to guarantee that they would let the backside be changed back to commercial.
What?
Because, um, um, but they want, so they want the, they want the applicant to take all the risks when they're, when, when the applicant's already paid.
I don't think there's a risk that's being taken.
I'm, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion.
If, if I may, Mr.-
I want to make a motion to get it on the table. I can't tell the votes in this case. But, and I've said this before, this process is a punishment to the property owners of this county. And I don't blame the staff for that. It just is. It's set up to punish them. And I'm going to move that we approve 2022-17. Um, and, um, we'll see where it goes from there.
Okay. And just to be clear, Mr. Simmons, you're moving to approve with-
With, with the applicant's, uh, wording for the findings.
Okay. Do, do we have a second?
Do we have discussion?
Well, he has a motion on the floor, so.
I'll second it to get the discussion out.
All right, we have a second. Now go into discussion.
Mr. Page, you were going to, I'm real curious. You, you were, you were ready to come up with something, and now I'm curious.
Is the board going to discuss this or do?
I was curious what you were, uh-
I'm sorry?
I, I was just very curious. I think you were coming up with a potential solution.
Well, I had, I had another suggestion here, but if the board wants to consider-
Let me go to our attorney, uh, Ms. Buell. Uh, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, as far as proper order, will we be allowed to continue to take testimony from the applicant during that time or we have to limit it to just the board discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
If Mr. Page is, I mean, if Mr. Page has something else he wants to offer, I'm willing to remove my, withdraw my, my, uh, motion.
Okay. Did you, did you want to add more? Because we can't take testimony in discussion period, but we, he will withdraw his motion if you want to go give more testimony.
Let me, could you give me one minute?
Yes, sir.
And, and while he's doing that, Mr. Simmons, you, you, I think it's clearly, if this come back, I think we, we, the board definitely has some concerns. So, so if it comes back with the, Mr., with the recommendation that Mr. Reed and was talking about, that I think that can be considered wholeheartedly if it comes back. Because the board is, y'all have some concerns and y'all want to make the recommendation. I mean, y'all made the recommendation, so I think y'all could grant that recommendation if it comes back up. Not a fine decision, it was, it was with the BCC. But, but we could definitely review it wholeheartedly and get, come back and, and have more discussions with that half split zoning and that made. And, and I think that's the desire of the board. So we're going, compromise is what we have to do sometimes.
That's what we'd like to offer.
You'd like to-
I'd like to-
Ask him to withdraw his motion?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Simmons, will you consider withdrawal of the motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Page. Additional?
Mr. Chairman, early on in the discussion, uh, and we have a gentleman, uh, here that, that lives in this particular area. My understanding is he lives in the extreme south-westerly corner, uh, of that subdivision. Early on, there was some concern about having HCLI coming up behind those homes. So we just, and we discussed this with the staff. There was a suggestion made that if you took a line and drew it across generally the vicinity of that southwest corner of the subdivision and connect it into something and give a legal description for that and have that classified as something else, uh, to protect , uh, those subdivision lot owners and what have you. And we did that. The, the consultant, uh, the surveyor went back out and produced a, a survey that shows a line, uh, if you take the, the southerly, southeast, uh, south-westerly corner of his subdivision where he lives, and you come down five feet, because we didn't want it to be touching his property, and you go due west, 185 feet, you go into the center of, uh, this division line, the environmental area, protected area, going back north and then coming back across to the back of the subdivision and then back down. I think that, uh, the owner and he certainly, or the buyer, he certainly, uh, could, could speak to this, he would be amenable to some type of line that separates the two out to a lesser category up top and a heavy commercial light industrial to the south. But again, the, the, whatever decisions that we need, uh, that we make need to be done today. Uh, so this was something that we did offer, but being it didn't come up until right now, I've held this, uh, back, but I have a signed and sealed survey that produces that line. And I don't think that, uh, uh, the buyer would have much concern about extending it completely across because it goes across Gulf Power Company property and then it gets into a area that's already classified, uh, as environmentally, uh, sensitive and you can't build on it anyway.
Let me, let me just stop you there just for a second and ask, Horace specifically, I mean-
We would have to, we, we would have to review that without us looking at it and, and, and making sure because of rezonings, you rezone the, the legal description. So we have to take a look at it and make sure that we can draw that and, and now I, here's another poss, if we want to have a, if the board is open, if the board is solid as I, if you're open to a special- the board is solid, if you're open to a special rezoning case within two weeks or three weeks to address this case, to give staff time, I got, I got Mr. Andrew Homer, we got our survey department, we have to re-advertise them again with that split zoning, because we got to make sure, we don't come, want to come cause no procedural issue and it be a technical issue. And it's, we still got to come back and do it over because we missed something.
Well, I think my question to you would be, you've obviously reviewed the findings of facts for the entire parcel.
Yes, sir.
Would you feel that the findings of facts on the split parcel would meet the criteria? I guess that's what their concern is, is if they accept commercial, and then all of a sudden you say, oops, it's still not going to work for HCLI, they haven't, you know, he's closed on a piece of property and not gotten the zoning he's asking for, so.
So what, what, what he want, he want the, 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 what the buildings, commercial, the the, what the buildings are, HCLI?
Yes.
And how far back, is that what I'm saying? We need to, we see.
Well, it would go, it would go north until we hit this line that would stop it.
I would prefer, the the best, the best way, the best option to do this, either give, give, give the staff time to look at it. I do not want to have no procedural defects in something that we miss that's not according to the requirement of the Nenavemaco, I'm talking about looking at things, whether you, many times you can't do upzoning, so if you do a downzoning, the question for upzoning, downzoning, so I I want to look at all of those rules per se.
Speaking of the timing, so we're discussing a recommendation from this board to the Board of County Commissioners, who will review it, not in two days, but in the following month, is that correct, or in two days?
December.
In December?
Yes, sir.
So the decision we make today will be reviewed in December. So again, why couldn't we make the recommendation? And in that timeframe, I understand the legal, again, I would ask for Ms. Buell, welcome, welcome to our party, and, you know, we're, we're sharing one of the hard, I I understand because of procedurally, and, but we're still having the same timeframe, and it's a recommendation that can always be thrown out by the Board of County Commissioners. And in the process, there's a survey, which a survey is done, and a legal description has been already, if I'm not mistaken, carved out by that survey, which costs money to have the survey done. And it is there, it's not a, it's not a theoretical line, it's a line that is real. And I think, again, everything we're doing is under, we're not trying to go above, and I understand your reticence, just because it's out of the norm, but I'm telling you to get a little weird.
Respectfully, I am, and 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 typically, when it comes to quasi judicial processes with rezonings and 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 rules, I do not, I am, I'm reluctant to 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 do this right now, Mr. Page, respectfully. I would, I would love to come back and look at it, but I I want to make sure that I am following all of the legalities, all of it, because I'm not, I'm not liable of doing my job.
Horace, I I I hear you, you're on the record saying you're defending your position. This question, of course, again, goes to the attorney. Is concerning proper foundation for establishing the findings of facts with that line. I support having the split zoning, but will we have the proper foundation to establish that for the quasi judicial case?
I think it's unusual, and it it could be challenged, so it may be best. To follow staff's direction.
And when you're saying could be challenged, splitting it into two zoning districts at this meeting because we don't have the findings of facts as the foundation?
Yes.
Okay. So there's your answer. We we may like that and support it, but it it could be a challenge.
But we do have the findings.
Well, we could, again, go back to my recommendation, approve right now the commercial. Let him be comfortable with the purchase, that he can at least do something with it, and that his zoning is changing, and then come back in a month or whatever that happens to be, that gets them, gets, you know, all the findings get done correctly.
But how is that any different?
To do the low, because then, then there's, we're not making a, a very unusual request today without, you know, we don't have the time for the staff to go over the legal descriptions. We don't have the time for the staff to go through all the the requirements of HCLI on the south part. It just, I I, to me, it, what we're asking the staff to allow us to recommend, even the attorney said it may be a, may be challenged, if if the homeowner association decides to challenge it, then we're going to be in a nice court battle. But if we agree to the commercial right now, which even the, you know, the person, the homeowner, that that would be okay, we could then come back, make that change, let him go forward with his, you know, he's, he's got a very short timeframe for for an exchange, but that gives him the courage that we are moving in the right direction for his property and for his future needs on the property.
Could I ask, so the, what you're saying is you want the HCLI on the Lillian Highway, and you want the commercial on the si, on the north half? So why can't you? All right, so why couldn't you leave the, it's currently on the, on the eastern, skinnier part, anyway, it's all HDMU. Couldn't you leave that HDMU and then have your HCLI on the bottom?
All of that, all of that still, we still have this.
I mean, right, but I I didn't think, because you're talking about two different zonings again, and I'm like, well, it's already HDMU. If you're not going to do any development on the northern part, then you could just leave it HDMU, and then.
Are you saying that the property is currently ZMI?
That eastern, yes.
Yeah, the eastern portion is HDMU.
The eastern portion is where you're doing your line for the neighborhood?
Okay, all right.
And then leaving it HDMU, and then having your HCLI on the Lillian Highway, northern or southern piece? That was just a thought.
It seems less complicated to simply draw a line across and say, below this is HCLI, but north of this is commercial, but the time is the problem.
Yeah.
And 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 I think, if if, we've been working on this a couple of weeks, a couple of months, I'm, I I I think, Mr. Rushing, ideal to get it, and we, and 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 we can put it to get it, because, and I, and I, and I could even write a letter, as I said before, I could have wrote a letter to the banks indicating that those uses, everything that's there can continue to remain in perpetuity. I could have wrote a letter that, like I do, I write, I I write banks' letters all of the time. They can have some on my letter, and I do it all of the time. With that, and with that coming back, that.
So for, chairman, all right. Mr. Walker?
I'm in agreement a little bit here on, with the two conversations we've just had, is, my question would be, Horace, if, if the question here is, we don't have the information on where this line exactly is from staff's point of view, and now what the impacts are for the southern parcel, but we, if we had two weeks, we had three, four weeks, we could get that figured out and get this resolved, is that not something that if we approve or send a recommendation today to the Board of County Commissioners that can be solved before their meeting, when this would finally get approved, and allow them to tackle that issue? So it doesn't have to come back here before it goes back to the board?
They would have to come back to the board because we're there. The record got to, we cannot change the record once this board approves. So we cannot change the record once this board, like I said, we cannot change the record, that's, that's what I did this process, I, but we can't, the record cannot be changed.
The person.
Recommendation, but I, we could, Mr. Rushing, I think that's a, that's a reasonable solution.
Well, I, I personally like the idea of, you know, granting commercial. My concern is, and this would again go to the attorney, welcome to your first planning board meeting, but are we implying that if they come back, that the board would then approve the HCLI? And for the bottom half, I mean, it kind of sounds like, well, we'll give you commercial, and then if you come back, trust us, we've, we might give you the the HCLI. I I'm, I don't feel comfortable with that kind of statement out there on behalf of the board, I just.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't personally trust us either, but.
Well, that's, that's why I asked you specifically, and I am putting you on the spot. If if this line is drawn, could the findings in a future meeting support HCLI on the bottom half of this? I'm kind of putting you on the spot, but I'm trying to make my decision whether, I don't want to sit here and look these guys in the face and say, yeah, we're going to give you commercial today, and then we're going to consider HCLI next month, and then you come back and say, oh, it's not going to work down there either. That, to me, that's.
This is what I can tell you, is that, is that, the 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 discussion, we had a very, very rigorous discussion today. All of those things that the planning board suggests they will be highly considered, highly, highly, 100% considered, we will, we will work with the buyers to make sure that every alternative is explored, and that the best possible solution will come back for this board to make a sound, solid recommendation with the term, because all this stuff is reported, public notification, not public notification, the record, and there'll be part of the record. So you, if you hear what I'm saying, there are no absolutes, clearly, but there are some, but there are some strong certainties that I'm just making, that we will review and explore every alternative that this planning board is is considering today. And that's the best I can do without saying, giving you absolute, because there's no absolutes, but there's always some very, very favorable movement going forward.
I understand.
I have a question. I'm kind of curious, I'm sorry, Reed.
Go ahead.
Okay. My, my question is this, is if we were going to do that, and the north piece of the property that's next to the subdivision is pretty much undevelopable anyhow, undevelopable, I can't say it either, anyhow, what benefit do we gain from waiting? Because ultimately, the customer's going to end up, or the property owner's going to end up using the property essentially the way that they're asking to be able to use it now. And so the question becomes, why not give them what they're asking for? And I'm, I'm just curious is what the benefits of not giving them that are from the standpoint of the members of the board?
Well, I think that the question's out there, again, it's not this owner we're worried about, it's the next one, or the next one, or the next one, that, again, I I understand it's restrictive, and it's not, it's for the peace of mind for the people who live back there, I think that's the rationale. I think the solution's right in front of us, and we can't grasp it to save our life. It, it, I almost feel like it should be left, the HDMU, and then the the bottom half's what we're talking about. But I guess procedurally, we can't do that. So we're pushed into two corners, the way I see it. Number one, vote on it the way it's been presented to us, or number two, we shift gears, because we can do that for some reason, and pull it down to commercial, that doesn't bother anything, because we don't have any legal descriptions, and then theoretically promise that we'll come back and look at it favorably in the future, which is awkward to say the least. But again, caught with my own words, I say we're going to have to do some weird stuff, maybe that is. But unless I'm missing something, those are the two options. And that's where we are.
Chairman?
Why can't we do it the flip side? Give them what they're asking for with the promise that we'll get back together and fix the top side? If if we're willing to ask them to trust us, then why can't, why can't we flip it?
They're going to come back and ask for a downzoning?
Pretty much, pretty much.
So, um, hearing, hearing the concerns of of the board about, you know, would HCLI pass next time around? And Mr. Page has already given us the information on his findings that HCLI would pass. So as long as those findings are not changing, even if the board doesn't agree currently with those findings, we were, we have the ability to accept Mr. Page's findings next time around as well, to move forward with HCLI.
Absolutely.
As long as Mr. Page doesn't change his findings, that is, I don't want to forecast or, you know, or anything of that nature, but that's where my head, headspace was going with all this.
That's a very good point, Mr. Rushing, I appreciate that. Mr. Page? Morning, sir, you're still under oath, and just state your name again for the record.
Richard Juge, I'm the buyer for the property. I'm looking for whatever the solution is, I know this gentleman back here doesn't know me from Adam, but that, that's our intent, we, we do have the survey with a line drawn on it, and I'm not an attorney, but is there any way to request this HCLI be approved today? We submit this survey with a line on it, that is there a proviso, or something that says, I'll come back in 30 days, make application to downzone that to whatever sort of commercial zoning would would be in meeting with you guys, as a proviso, as a condition of approval, is that not allowed?
We don't have conditional use, we, we don't have conditional rezonings, and and we don't, that's, we, we don't have conditional rezonings. Again, because of the rules of quasi judicial processes, I, I, I think what what has been on the board, if you, you got a good person who working with you, if you could basically, whatever, Mr. Reed, come back, let the planning, the BCC, they have ultimate authority, then we could come back and we could work on those other things. Mr. Reed is right, even if staff do find some other things that are not known, but we, we're not expecting that, the the board, they are the one that make the recommendation, and they have, they can overturn our decision at that time. But we're going to, we're going to make sure that it's not, because we'll meet with you all and get it more fine tuned, and get it, get all the processes and the steps in order, because quasi judicial rules are very, very complicated.
I'll ask the owner, is it helpful if, if Mr. Rushing were to propose, if he were to propose?
Is it a board member?
If said board member were to propose this to be zone commercial with the recommendation that it's revisited within 14, 30 days, that the bottom half under your, this is a recommendation coming from us, you get the approval for commercial, the recommendation is we revisit in two weeks, three weeks, that the lower half be addressed again with HCLI. So therefore, it's not just an empty promise, it is piece and partial to our recommendation of the Board of County Commissioners. I know it's going to be weird, they'll explain it, Board of County Commissioners are pretty smart guys, they can figure it out, but, you know.
We reverse that, HCLI on the bottom and commercial on the top, then address that.
I I personally wouldn't approve that, just, just because, you know, I I.
Can I offer one other suggestion?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. The, I got to get east and west right, the western property, can we not get that zoned HCLI today? That doesn't, but the subdivision, and it wouldn't be a concern to them, approve commercial on the east side, and, guys, this is a huge financial risk for me, if I agreed with this.
The problem is the legal description, I think, because back to procedural.
I think there are already two properties, I'm sorry.
I, I know, or you do have two, but is it not the?
See, this is the thing, we, we, that's why, that's why we cannot make these type of decisions on the fly like this, is, is, it, it, it's, it's, it's complicated, because, and we've been dealing with this for about a couple of hours now, it's hard for us to make these decisions on the, on, on, on the, on the fast whim like this, especially when these processes are so, can be legally challenged, so, so I, it, it just almost a little, Mr. Page, we're doing this a long time, to make these decisions like this on the fly sometimes, it's not as easy, because we can mess up, then, then, then the counter be liable.
Yeah, I mean, it was legally.
Before the judge.
It was legally advertised as doing it for one whole entire parcel. If we start splitting it up, there is a possibility of of a, of a challenge. Likelihood it won't happen, but there's a possibility, and I think that would mess you up even further.
Yeah. And and I'm sorry, I, I have to request HCLI, guys, I, I have lenders, I have other people involved, and if I come back and I'm not allowed because of whatever reason happens between now and next month. between now and next month, respectfully, it's going to, it's going to kill the deal. So.
Okay.
Could we, could we, uh, well, I guess we can, so there's no point in asking.
Well, the board can make a, you've already made a motion at one point for the entire parcel to be HCLI, and we could take a vote on it. Um, if the vote fails, then you could come back and ask if it can be considered for commercial if you want. Is there any legal issue with doing it that way?
Well, I withdrew the motion, but I'm going to do it again.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to make the motion that we approve, um, holy crap, seven, is it seventeen?
Yes, sir, twenty twenty-two seventeen.
Twenty twenty-two seventeen, with the, um, with the language that the applicant proposed for the finding. And before I let go of the motion, I'm going to say that again, I, I believe that this process is punishing them. And we, we have, in, in my short time on the, uh, on the board, we don't seem to take the steps that we need to take in order to fix that, so it's not as punishing. And I trust them just as much as we ask them to trust us, that they would come back and work with us to rezone it later if they want to. But my motion is to approve it with their language.
Right, motion to approve for the full HCLI. We have a second.
I'll second for vote.
All right, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And, that's three? And opposed?
Nay.
Okay, uh, so Rushing and Pyle were, uh, opposition. So you have a three to two vote in favor, so the motion to amend to the Board of County Commissioners for approval, and, um, they'll have the ultimate decision as they do always anyway, so, um, good luck with it, sir.
Thank you, board.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move, uh, directly into our last case. Uh, Mr. Henry's been very patiently waiting. This case is Z twenty twenty-two dash eighteen, Thomas Henry, agent for Masonry W LLC, Thomas Henry, who is the owner, eight hundred and eight fifty-five, uh, Highway two ninety-seven A, thirty-eight point five one acres, from LDR to LDMU. Members of the board, I'll ask if there's been any ex parte communication on this case. Gentlemen, if you'll please go outside the chambers. Members of the board, has there been any ex parte communication between you, the applicant, agents, attorneys, witnesses, planning board members, or anyone from the general public prior to the hearing? Also, please, uh, describe if you have visited the subject property, or you are a relative or business associate to any of the, uh, parties.
No to all.
All right, thank you, sir.
No to all.
All right, Mr. Pyle has stepped out of the room temporarily, but we'll ask him when he comes back in. Chairman, no to all?
No to all.
No to all.
All right, no to all, okay. Um, Mr. Henry, do you have any opposition to the, uh, staff presenting the maps and photography? Hey, uh, all right, no.
Mr. Chairman, should we wait as we don't have a quorum sitting up here currently?
Okay, all right, we're going to just pause for a minute.
Five minute break?
Yeah, let's go ahead and just take a very quick, I'm sorry, Thomas, but we're going to take a quick five minute break, just please come back, uh, at fifteen till eleven, so, uh, ten forty-five, please. We do have a board member that has to leave at eleven, so we have a hard stop at eleven thirty, so we need to keep this moving. Um, before we went to break, I had asked about ex parte communication, and I think, Mr. Pyle, you were out of the room when I asked, any ex parte, subject property visit, or relative or business associate of any of the parties?
No, sir, no to all.
Okay, no to all, everyone else has responded. We do have all our voting members back, so we have our quorum, and we were at the point where we were going to allow, uh, staff to present maps and photography.
Okay, so this is the Z twenty twenty-two eighteen, this is a location map showing this, the site on Highway two ninety-seven A, and this is the zoning showing the parcels as LDR. This is the future land use showing Mixu Suburban, and this is the existing land use map. And this is the subdivision map, showing the subdivisions in the area. And this is the aerial and the wetlands map. This is the public hearing sign that was posted on site. This is looking into the subject parcel. Looking west across Highway two ninety-seven A. Just looking east across Highway two ninety-seven A. Looking south along Highway two ninety-seven A. This is the Jackson Estate subdivision that's right next to the subject property on two ninety-seven A. And this is the Scammy County Road Department that is, uh, adjacent to this parcel. And this is just a picture of the road department. And that's the end of the maps and photographies.
Okay, any questions on that? All right, Mr. Henry? Good morning, sir. If you'll please come forward and be sworn in. Thanks, sir, good morning, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Thomas Henry, three one five eight Gateway Lane, Canton, Florida.
All right, thanks, sir. Did you receive a copy of the hearing package and the staff's findings?
I did.
Okay, and do you understand that you have the burden of providing substantial evidence that this proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, furthers the goals, objectives, and policies of that plan, and not in conflict with the Land Development Code?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, sir.
I'd like to give, um.
Okay, can you tell us what you're introducing there, Mr. Henry?
These are, uh, just basically, uh, a copy of the zoning, current zoning, uh, map as Scammy County has it, and I've written on there some of the parcels and who they are, who they belong to.
Okay.
As, as it is in reference to my parcel.
So this is, uh, something in addition to what's in the staff's findings and facts, or is it similar, just with your handwriting on it, is that what it is?
It's, it's similar with my handwriting.
Okay, so, um, Chair, will entertain a motion to accept these all as one exhibit, um, as the applicant's exhibit?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, we'll label that, uh, applicant's exhibit one, please. All right, go ahead, sir.
I think I have enough. Um, if you'll look at, um, when, when you get it, and you, you look at it, basically, it's a zoning, it's a copy of the zoning map as it is currently in Scamby County. On this, um, my property is the one that's got the orange highlight circle around it as, uh, they had stated. Um, and just for reference, I, I do own the property that's below it that has my name on it, I own that property next to it, too. That would have probably been a part of this package today, but I couldn't get the survey done in time, so it, I couldn't, I would have liked to present it, but I couldn't present it, so, um, it's not there today. But if you continue down, those two pieces I have, they're contiguous, there's one in the circles, the one that's, that's here today. If you continue, continue down the orange, that's all LDMU, which is what I'm asking for in this rezoning. Um, that whole corner is LDMU, and it would be contiguous with the properties as they continue up, they would all be contiguous together. Um, but that is, that's, it, it shows LDMU all the way down to the corner. Um, and as you would look at the map, directly to my north is the Scam, the Scammy County Road Prison Camp, um, that's directly on my border. It's, it's identified as public on the zoning classification, but if it was any other, if it wasn't owned by the county, it would probably be an industrial use of, you know, or, you know, heavy commercial at least. Um, there's a five acre parcel also that borders me to the north, that's directly north of my property. Um, that's owned by Scammy County Utilities Authority, and that is their Canton Water Treatment Plant. So that's actually a, a, a sewage treatment facility at that, at that point. Directly across the street is, you know, International Paper, which we all know what International Paper is, and there's a, you know, about another, probably ten acre piece that says FPL, that's an FPL substation, electrical substation, that's, you know, um, there again, a very, you know, heavily, um, commercialized and industrial area. So, and then if you go further north, International Paper has the, the parcel north of the, um, the Scammy County, uh, road camp. You know, I'm, I'm asking for LDMU in this zoning, and, you know, one of the reasons why is because before this was, uh, rezoned in the, um, new categories I have, this was actually V five. And so, by doing, when, when they put LDR on it, V five, that's, that's correct, right, yeah, uh, when they put LDR on it, they actually downzoned this property from what I'm capable of doing, and all I'm, and I'm, I'm a residential person, I'm looking for the residential flexibility, and when they done it, the new category went to LDR, it basically downzoned what I was capable of. LDR allows me that flexibility, that would be basically the same as what V five was. And so that's why I'm, that's, I'm looking for a residential application of this. I think staff's concern is commercial, I have no interest in retail commercial, um, it's not what I do, so I'm looking at the flexibility LDMU gives me from a standpoint of, um, my residential application of it. There's some flaws in the, you know, in the Land Development Code when it comes to the LDR and MDR categories, when it comes to those things. And so, that, that's, that's my purpose is, is I want to do a residential development, and the residential flexibility that LDMU gives me matches what it would be with V five. Also, if you look to the south, there's a subdivision that's called Jackson Estates, that subdivision was done in the, at the older zoning, that was, I don't know when that was done, maybe in eight or ten, something in that, that timeframe. And of course, this new zoning took place in fourteen or fifteen. And so basically, you can't, I can't, I mean, that's, I can't do that on my parcel, but the way the zoning has been applied to it, that's different than what it used to be. So, all I'm asking for is, uh, LDMU, so I can have the residential flexibility. Commercial is not, it's really not a, I mean, actually, I mean, it, I'm, I disagree, I think in the, in the findings, I think it, 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 it's, um, Horace has the, um, interpretation that it's a, he says it doesn't, you know, apply, or it's not consistent with the Land Development Code, I disagree with that. You know, the whole, he, the spot zoning, it's really not a spot zoning, because, I mean, I have the part, the parcels contiguous to it, so it eventually will be the same zoning, and it's also the same zoning that's, that's south of there. You know, it, I mean, what, I don't know what you're supposed to do when you're next to a prison camp and four industrial applications are, that are all around you, so, um, um, and there's a couple of things I highlighted in this, there are a couple of red circles. And it's just for reference of a standpoint, for as he relates to something, you know, from a spot zoning standpoint, there's a small LDMU parcel that is, that's, that, that would actually be spot zoning, that would not be my parcel, but it's, it's spot zoned LDMU in the middle of a, you know, residential neighborhood. And, you know, I don't know, I mean, I know it's a restaurant, fine, I have no problems with it, but, um, you know, it's, it's, it's an example of what a true spot zoning would be, don't know how, and, you know, the argument, if he uses that argument against mine, then that argument should be used against that, too. So, um.
Mr. Chairman.
Anyway, it's just some examples of some inconsistencies that they have with how they apply the Land Development Code, as in my case. I'm not looking for a commercial use, like I said, it's, it's, it's the residential flexibility of the, um, of the, um, performance standards and lot sizes and stuff like that, that, that presents a problem for me.
Mr. Chair, uh, how many, Mr. Henry, how many houses are you planning on putting on that, one with the orange square there, what's, what's the subdivision that you're looking at?
It's basically what I, I, I mean, I.
How many, you're talking, how many houses?
It, it depends on whatever, it can kind of come up with us, there's wetlands on the, on the west side of it.
How many acres is that?
It's thirty-eight acres, completely total.
You could put seven times thirty.
I mean, yeah, you, you don't, you never, that, that's one of the flaws that, that I stated, that's in the Land Development Code. You never, I mean, on a perfectly square, this is a perfectly square piece of property, but it has wetlands on it, so you don't get that square. But i- if this was a perfectly square piece of property, and that was all uplands, I wouldn't get seven dwellings an acre. I mean, you, you can never get your densities when it comes to, you know, your residential development.
But you got the other piece of property south that you're.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah.
You're planning on raising subdivision in there.
And it, it's, it's the same situation, it's got wetlands around it, um, you're not going to get your density on it, and, and as far as, from that piece, um, you know, as far as, you know, LDMU goes, there are other provisions in the code that wouldn't allow the commercial application to get to that, because you can't go through subdivisions for commercial and things like that, as, as it applies to LDMU. And that would also apply to the case, um, in, in the situation. It, it just, it, but even, you know, at the worst case scenario, even if it was the argument that, that it's not a transition area between commercial and residential, I mean, I don't, you know, it, it's actually goes from the heaviest commercials you can get to, to, you know, residential, so I don't know what you're supposed to transition there or build, you know, I'm actually a little concerned about, you know, having that area next to the prison camp, because the whole, the subdivision next to it, I mean, I've built a lot of those houses, and they were in the hundreds, you know, hundred, I mean, in the hundred thousand range, you know, when they sold. I mean, price sensitivity's going to be an issue here, so, you know, the, being able to do, you know, lots that I can get a, a price flexibility with is, is really one of the things that it needs to have. And, um, the commercial, I said, I'm not, not, I'm not retail commercial, which I think is his concern, is not something that I'm.
Well, I was looking at it more as capacity issue for our schools up that way.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah, so that's, that's where it's going, but, I mean, we got subdivisions going in all over the place up there, so.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the, the, I mean, what it.
All that.
It's, um, you know, right now, it's, it's a sixty foot width, lot width, that's the problem. The one below it, those are fifty foot lots, and like I said, that was a, you can't do that in this category. You know, what a, you know, how many it goes, I don't know, it, because you got to put, and I haven't got to the point of plating it out or anything, it don't make any sense at this point, but, um, when you take your ponds and your roads and your, your wetlands out, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's not going to be seven units an acre, so.
Mr. Henry, can, uh, so, looking at your, your map with the orange square, which is what we're talking about today, that's represented by the red square here on our map, correct?
Yes.
Entirety. Right, but on your documents, it says Thomas Henry, uh, you own that piece as well, but that's also where the Heaton Road, the current, there's current houses there now, right?
There's houses on the, that eastwardly part that border the road, yes.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I was considering, Mr. Adams, that, you know, it's not like, if this is approved, then there's this big vast empty piece underneath it that's going to be rambled into a huge subdivision, because you've already got houses there, and to your point, the lot widths were different for that than they will be for the future one, and they'll be more restricted for the, this future one.
Yeah, it was been made more restricted, yeah.
Right, right.
And, and, and as far as, you know, and also from a, you know, the part that I, where I disagree with staff, and I would ask that you, that you would approve this to be LDMU is, because if you look at the existing LDMU, drew a little line down it, um, there's, there's an existing subdivision there, but the front half of that, and I drew, it, it's drawn, I, I got it highlighted, not highlighted, but I got a black line around it, that front, that part is LDMU and is vacant. So, I mean, somebody could come in there and put a Dollar General, they could put a Hardee's, they could, you know, they could do anything they wanted right there, that would be consistent with LDMU, and, and make that work, and that's a thousand feet, you know, give or take, below the property I'm at. I'm not, I'm not looking to do, I'm looking to do residential, but it, my point is, if from a consistency standpoint, from that point all the way to the corner, that's all residential. Um, and to, to apply the use that mine would not be consistent, because he's worried about the commercial aspect of it, that I'm not even looking for, is kind of hard for me to grasp when he's already zoned a piece below it, LDMU, that can, they can do, they can do anything they want from a commercial aspect, so, um, that's already been broken from that standpoint as, as far as that argument goes.
My apologies, Mr. Henry, I'm sorry. Just, uh, hold on just a minute, Mr. Henry, just let the record, uh, reflect that Mr. Pyle had to leave the meeting.
Just let the record reflect that Mr. Pyle had to leave the meeting, but we still do have a quorum, so we'll continue. Go ahead, sir.
So, spill water. I guess my, I mean, the argument he's making is, is already been broken. You can't, you can't make the argument that he's worried about commercial when he's already allowed, to be allowed to take place a thousand from me. And also when my north border is, you know, has four pretty much industrial uses around it, all I'm asking for is, is the LDMU, and I'm looking for it from a residential flexibility standpoint because, um, it gives me flexibility from a lot design standpoint for the product that I would need to be putting in this area. And as I said, the parcel below it would be part of it if I was able to get my surveyor out there and get it done in time, but, you know, I didn't have time to do that. So, and then, and that would make it all contiguous, and it's going to be contiguous anyway, so.
Okay.
It may not connect, I mean, it may not, the developments may not connect, but the uses, the properties will, you know, that'll, I'm gonna, I would come and do a subdivision on that at some point too. And it'll be, it's not going to be a commercial aspect, it's just going to be a residential application, so.
How many acres of that property?
That property is gonna be right at 55.
Okay. Any other questions, um, for Mr. Henry at this point? All right, we'll give you an opportunity to, uh, come back and give any additional after you hear the staff's comments. Allison, you presenting this one too?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Z 202218, requesting from LDR to LDMU. So on criteria one, consistent with comprehensive plan. It is consistent with the intent and purpose of the future land use category mixed use suburban. Res zoning to LDMU is only allowed in the future land use mixed use suburban or mixed use urban future land use category. The mixed use suburban allows for residential neighborhoods, non-residential uses, recreation facilities, public, civic, and limited agricultural. The parcel will use existing roads and infrastructures. For criteria B, consistent with the land development code, the proposed amendment to the LDMU is not consistent with the intent and purpose of the land development code. The current zoning is density residential, which is a single-family residential district. And the request to rezone to LDMU for the two parcels totaling 38.51 plus or minus acres would allow a mix of commercial uses that are not commer, uh, currently allowed in the LDR. The primary intent of the LDMU is to have a mix of neighborhood scale, retail sales, services, and professional offices with the greater density intensity of the LDR district. Residential uses within the LDMU include most forms of single-family, two-family, and multifamily dwellings. The LDMU district is to provide transition between the areas zoned or used for low or medium-density residential and areas zoned or used for high-density mixed use. The adjoining parcels to the west and south are LDR and Indian Lake subdivision zoned LDMU one quarter mile to the south. The adjoining parcel to the north is the Skamie County Road Department and the prison camp zone public. So the GIS mapping has it an X and an A flood zone with an area of wetlands on the west portion of the property, noting the presence of prime soils on the eastern boundary line. And then avoidance of minimization as well as buffering will be required for any future development. Compatible with surrounding uses, the proposed amendment is not consistent with the surrounding LDR uses in the area. There were LDR, public, LDMU, and industrial zonings across, and, and industrial zone across eight, um, Highway 297A. The LDMU district is, um, inter, intended to rely on a pattern of well-connected streets and to provide for a separation of suburban uses for more dense and intense urban uses. The allowable uses in the LDMU could create small-scale developments of 6,000 square feet or less per lot, as well as other uses that are not compatible with the current low-density residential zonings. Criteria D, appropriate of spot zoning. LDMU is considered spot zoning only by definition because it's not adjacent to another zoning of the same. The LDMU being transitioned in character would be more intense in the current LDR zoning, and therefore it couldn't be compatible with surrounding properties of the single-family. Criteria E, appropriate with change or change conditions. The land uses or development conditions within the area have not changed and the development is low-density residential. The request to LDMU would be, would allow some commercial uses that aren't compatible with the ceris, the existing surrounding development patterns of single-family. The current LDR has, has a 60-foot wide lot width, whereas the LDMU has a 40-foot. I know Mr. Um, Henry mentioned that the, the subdivision down to the south was LDMU. That in the past, the previous zoning was VM2, so it's not like it, it was going, it, not like it was LDR and for some reason we rezoned it to LDMU. It was a different zoning prior to. His, his parcel currently was V5 before it was LDR. They both, um, allow single-family. I think the mixed-use component that he's referring to for the neighborhood commercial uses, um, it would be more intense, although in this area, as, as you noticed by the maps and if you've driven up that way, um, there's not a lot up there as the pictures showed. It, it's, I think he said it's going to be sewored, so then it would be, because there's a difference if it's sewored or unsewored. But according to the, uh, for the low-density mixed use, it's the mixed-use component for the, the subdivision, um, that wasn't compatible.
Okay, so it's partially compatible if it's the residential, but not if it's going to be the commercial?
Right.
Okay, could you bring up the, uh, zoning map with the surrounding? Again, I just wanted to look at that. Okay. That pocket to the east of MDR, um, I guess I'm just not familiar enough with what, what is back in that area that was zoned MDR? Oh, it's, looks like a pit or something? Do you know what that is, Thomas? If you'll come to the microphone, please, sir.
I didn't notice that. It, it's unusual. It's MDR and it's, I don't know why it's MDR tucked in the back like that, but, um, it's just a, as far as I know, a vacant piece. I don't know what's back there. I haven't been on the property, but.
Just, uh, caught my attention because it was kind of-
I think if you're referencing the piece that's, that's somewhere, yeah, right there, yeah, that's, that's what I was talking about, yeah.
Looks like an old RO pit maybe or something, I don't know. All right, any questions of staff?
I guess the only question I have is, you mentioned the residential, a number of different things, the surrounding area residential. And I have to agree that industrial and, um, the public use above is not saying that, you know, residential is all around this property. The only residential is south of this property. You, you, the, the staff findings aren't really even talking about the industrial or the, um, you know, they don't mention that. They say surrounding area is residential. So I just, I'd have to disagree with that statement, um, in the findings.
Well, it was divided by the, the 297A, so it's not, I mean, yeah, maybe in the 500 feet, but I didn't consider it since it was by a divided highway.
And 297A at that point is still just a two-lane with a, um, medium intersection, right? So it's not like a big highway, it's just, it's a two-lane with a medium intersection for the turnoff. Guess it's, it's considered a highway, but it's a pretty small highway.
I believe just south of that, you got the new intersection with the Dollar General store, right by the King, you know, where Kingsville, you can turn, left and go Kingsville Elementary. Uh, that's all been improved down there. Stephen Berry had to do that for the, the growth that's been in that area. So it's, it's a pretty well-traveled road.
Yeah, but it's still two-lane. At this point in time, where, where it costs from him, it's still just purely just two-lane.
Yeah, all, all roads, uh, north of nine-mile road going up that way is two-lane.
Anything else you'd like to add, uh, Mr. Henry?
No, I mean, I would concur. I mean, it, it, it's, it's a little, um, just to say it's residential, it's really the only residential. I mean, I would, the only residential is directly south on the one that's called Heaton Boulevard. And then if you go south of that, it's all LDM, you know, LDMU, which is residential too. But, um, it's, as far as, there, there's a whole lot more commercial, you know, industrial, heavy commercial around it, and that's not even what I'm looking for. I mean, I'm not even arguing that point, but, you know, I'm just trying to get a residential flexibility that allows me to, you know, utilize that property in the, in the best manner I can. And I'm not looking for a commercial aspect, but the argument that it's, there's, there's, um, too much residential around it doesn't make any sense because there's actually too much of the other around it. So I would just make, um, you know, just make that point, um, to the board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is anyone ready to make a motion on this one yet?
And I'd like to ask a quick little bit about that, maybe Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I was going to limit my discussion, um, but I'm betting a thousand. So, but we, we do want to make sure, again, LDR is strictly, strictly, is, is a single-family dwelling district. LDMU allows for commercial-type uses. We have to look at the adjacent, the contiguous, and the surrounding properties. That is a predominantly, that appears to be a predominantly residential area. So, so if we, i- if we want to begin a proliferation of it, of allowing this, then one to push the domino off, we can. Um, but, but that's what we'll be doing, creating. So I, I just want to state that for the record. I, 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 I work with Mr. Henry and I understand his, his desire is to, is to get, probably get a, a lower lot, a, a lower lot with requirement. But again, you're still going to be putting much more dense residential development in that largely predominant LDR, which allows for larger lot sizes.
Let me ask you a question about the previous zoning. I believe it was testified that it was V5, that's Villages 5. What was the zoning, I mean, what was the, uh, density on a V5?
It basically-
It depended on sewored or unsewored. So if it was-
Right, but what was the number?
Four units per acre.
Yeah.
If it, if it was sewored, it was four unit per acre. Unsewored, it was one, one unit per acre. What is it now, how's the LDR? Same, it's the same four, so, so there was no, there was no per se downzoning as far as the-
So that property that's to the south, I'm using, uh, Mr. Henry's Exhibit 1, the property that's to the south of where it says Thomas Henry, that now is LDMU, that was also-
No, well, no, it's not. That was, that was a complete transference. That was VM, that was VMU.
VM2.
VM2, which, which is basically same thing, though, same thing as low-density mixed use. It was just a carryover. So it was, it was no downzoning. That was compatible, that's why we changed it to, to low-density mixed. Because it was previously village mixed use would allow us for residential as well as commercial. So we couldn't down, we just had to, that was a change only.
It says Thomas Henry is the one that he owns that's LDR, and he, in the future, also wants to make it LDMU, but it's currently LDR. He just is wanting the lower, the 40-foot lot width versus the 60 now.
So then it would be contiguous through that whole area.
Right, I mean, yes.
Okay, yes, sir.
And just keep in mind, there's no domino here. I mean, again, I can, can completely disagree with their findings, okay? And there's nobody here to complain about it. So that'll tell you another thing right there. There, I mean, this has been up, there's nobody here to complain about because there's nothing to complain about. There is no domino. I mean, if you look, there's, there's nothing else to develop. I got two parcels and that's it. There, I mean, unless the county sells the, um, the road prison to somebody, I mean, unless, you know, International sells their plant, and, and, and then you, I mean, that's not, those aren't going to be turned into resident, residential, you know, situations. There is no domino. I can develop both those properties and it's not going to affect or cause anything to happen around there on any of these properties because this is it. These two properties are it. I mean, there is nothing else to go in that area. You can't go north and you can't go south because it's all, you know, there, there's no domino, as he states. And, and the other thing to keep in mind is, you know, what you ask about, here's the, here's the thing with that, and this is what I'm telling you where the fallacy and the flaw is, is they're not telling you that I, that with V5, you can go down to 40-foot lots. And that, that affects your density and that affects what you can put in the project. When you've got wetlands and roads, you're not going to get so much density according to your lot size. Your lot size is going to dictate that. So you do, the density, because the, the property south gets more density because of what it can do with the lot sizes than the property I have now. And so the, um, you know, that, that lot size difference does have an effect on what you can do, and that does cause a, a, you know, a density issue that you can't get to. So I can't-
So LDR is, what is the minimum lot size, LDR?
I think it's, I think it's-
It's 60 foot.
60, and what you had before in the V5 was 40 foot.
Yeah, yeah. And so that, that-
Wouldn't this fall into a savings clause category because of losing, uh, the, the width of the properties?
No.
Well, we talked about that and, and what they, and the, as it stated that you don't get the performance standards with the savings clause. That's, that was their interpretation of that. So, you know, the, the, um, the 60-foot lot would stay the same. So that's why, you know, it, 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 it is a down, you know, what they said or not, it is a downzoning of what it is. And keep in mind, the, um, you know, the whole point of the argument is they're worried about commercial, you know, and just, I have no commercial, I mean, this is a residential application. That's all I'm looking for. But, like I said, their argument does not hold water because the property just south of me, which is LDMU, has all the commercial capabilities that they're saying that I can't have a thousand foot above there next to a wastewater treatment plant. So somebody, you know, in between two residential houses can have a commercial application according to how they've got it now, that I can't have next to a wastewater treatment plant. That makes no sense. So, and, and there is no domino, it's not going to go anywhere. It's just a straight, you know, residential application I'm trying to get to because it was a change in the performance standards based upon how it got zoned, so.
And there are other criteria, as he's talking about, commercial on the, on the LDMU piece, if somebody wanted to do a commercial. You can't just go in there and put a commercial store, Dollar General or whatever in the neighborhood. You know, you've got local streets, you've got location criteria, you may be able to put some kind of neighborhood commercial if it's on the corner of a subdivision, not intruding into a subdivision. So there are other things that you have to look at. So just because that mixed use for the, the existing LDMU, that doesn't necessarily mean that, oh, you're gonna, you're gonna do that.
Well, and, and I tend to agree with Mr. Henry, you know, just because you have the same density dwelling units per acre, when you lose the ability to be able to make narrower lots, you lose density. And, and it's exactly what he said, when you develop a piece of property, your roadways eat up some of your acreage if you have to have a retained pond, wetlands, all these things eat up, uh, usable acres. So the ability to have the, the narrower lots, I think it is a loss to his property going from the V5 down to, uh, you know, to LDR or the change to LDR, I shouldn't say down to LDR, but because of the performance standard it'll with. So, I mean, I, I would be in favor of, of granting it for that reason, but, um, we'll hear from the other board members.
Here's my struggle, is, is that I'd, I'd, I'd be willing to make a motion to approve it, but I'm struggling with what language I put in there because I didn't actually hear replaceable language. but I'm struggling with what language I put in there because I didn't actually hear replaceable language from the applicant. So if someone can help me with that, I can make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Henry, I think what he's, what he's alluding to is when we make a motion to approve something, we rely on the staff's findings. And in this case, your findings are different than the staff's findings. And so he's wanting, I think, maybe to go on each one that we're finding is different than the staff and kind of give him something to base a motion on, if that makes sense. So, you know, if you're.
I think the only, the only place where my finding would be different is the consistency of the land development code. Is that correct?
Tell me what criteria B?
How many of them say inconsistent on your findings?
All except A.
Okay. So, Mr. Henry, what, what I would recommend is so that Mr. Hammond says something to, Sammons has something to base his motion on. Go through those criteria and just give us a little blurb on each one.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I get it correct.
Thank you, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I had mine and I didn't bring it, I apologize. So I would ask the board to find that criteria A, B, C, D, and E are consistent with the land development code to allow for the rezoning of this property to LDMU.
And, and along those lines, Mr. Henry. Yeah. So, just personally, I would recommend that you go one at a time and just give a finding of your own that he can base his motion on, you know, as why you would disagree with each one of the findings. I think that might.
Sorry?
Would that satisfy you, Mr. Sammons? Yes, good.
Yes, sir.
B is, y'all find B is consistent? No?
Let's, let's start at the top and go from the first one here. All right. The first one you said is consistent, let's go up to the top. Let's start right at the top.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I was reading wrong.
Okay, so let's see.
A is consistent.
Okay, so you're going to accept A findings, B would be where you would make your alternate findings?
Yes, I would, yeah. I would ask that you define B, that I would say that it is, that it is consistent. LDMU is consistent with the land development code.
Okay. And, and what was your reasoning behind it being consistent versus what the staff has said it's not consistent?
Yeah, I guess I should have done my homework a little better, I apologize.
No, it's okay, I'm just trying to help you through because I think you have a board member here ready to make a motion. He just wants to have something to put a basis under it.
Yeah. Well, number one, I'm not asking for a commercial. It's, it's a residential application. And so I'm not, that wasn't something that I was, you know, trying to apply for. But if it were, you know, if their concern is that, then it is, it does transition with being adjacent to existing uses that are already heavier than the just commercial, you know, type of activity. I would think that it would be consistent.
Okay. Let's go on to the next one. It looks like it says one-quarter mile south.
Yes.
So quarter mile.
Quarter mile, okay. So you're saying that similar property is within a quarter mile of what you're asking to do?
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry.
Yes, I think he did. He said similar property is within a quarter mile of.
Yeah, oh, yes, absolutely, yes.
And that's why you feel it's compatible. The staff looks at a five-hundred-foot radius area, is that correct, Allison? Okay. So in, in a case like that, Mr. Sammons, you, you could find that the applicant has made alternate findings that you would support in that case, so. Let's see.
Well. In cri, in criteria C, it's, it's very similar. That the, the staff is finding that it doesn't, it's not compatible with surrounding existing LDR uses. I mean, quite frankly, I'd, I'd say that, that there's not a lot of LDR uses to be compatible with. There's actually more other uses to be compatible with because there's more surrounding other uses of, or other zone property, actually other uses, not other zone property, other zone and other uses that are a heavier use from a commercial standpoint and LDR, LDMU standpoint around the property. So I would say that it actually would be compatible with it. So I, I would say that for C, that, that, that it is compatible. And then D, you know, the spot zoning, as I stated, the, it's not going to, I mean, they, they know that I own the property to the, you know, to the south of it, which it would be adjacent, which would do away with the spot zoning criteria if there was one. But spot zoning is so, you know, that, that's, that's always a, a, you know, interpretable thing per se according to how you want. And as I drew some circles around some of the other parcels, those are actually spot-zoned and there is absolutely no LDMU anywhere around them. Mine will be LDMU once those properties are contiguous and combined and, and it's compatible with LDM uses around it. So I would not consider this spot zoning at all.
Okay. And then the last one, if you'll roll the screen up just a little bit. It's basically saying it has not changed, so.
I think maybe there, the change happened when it went from the old zoning category to the, to the new one, that there was some change that, that you mentioned, Mr. Chairman?
Yep. The lot with technical standards.
Yeah, I think I've got enough here that I can, I, I just wanted to make sure I understood what the arguments were and get them on. And I'm, I move that we accept Mr. Henry's positions that, or the applicant's positions in this particular request and approve twenty-two dash eighteen. And I, and I, and I've got to add to that, that when you look at the, the treatment facility, the IP property, and the fact that the only space between the LDMU and the piece of property he's trying to make change to in, in zoning today is property that he's developed, I think that it's, it's, it's pretty consistent and, and pretty close, in pretty close proximity overall. So I, I'm making a motion to approve it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Motion to approve, accepting the applicant's findings of fact based on that. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? All right, motion carries. Good luck with it, sir.
Thank you, I apologize.
All righty. Let's move on to action discussion items. In order to amend Chapter three, Article five, Section three dash five-six, high-density residential commercial.
For this one, Mr. Briskie, we, we, we will be dropping this item.
Okay. All right. Do we have anyone for public forum? No one else left in the room, so I guess not. All right. Horace, Director's Review?
Don't have anything.
Okay. Ms. Buell, anything from the county attorney that you want to report?
No, but provided that there is a meeting scheduled in December, I will be presenting a sunshine review.
Okay. All right. And I think everyone had their initial sunshine instruction when they came on the board, but this would just be an update, review, just to remind everybody.
Just a refresher.
Okay. All right, very good. Do they have a replacement for the board attorney yet? Or are you going to be full-time with us, or you?
That has not been determined yet.
Okay. Yeah, she doesn't want to come in here full-time with us, so. All right. Our next meeting is going to be on December sixth, here in this meeting at eight, in this room at eight-thirty in the morning. Please, as always, respond to Rachel and let her know so we know if we're going to have a quorum. And if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.